Good evening, everyone, and welcome. Welcome to the September 30th, 2025, meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have roll call?
Yes, council members Asadrian.
Here.
Rotman. Carpetyan.
Here.
Casacyan.
Here.
Mayor Najarian.
Here. Will you all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And we are honored to have with us this evening Pastor Jonathan Henderson from the Vallejo Drive Church of Seventh Day Adventist.
Thank you so much for having me. It's such a pleasure to be here. Let's pray. Father, we ask for a special blessing upon these leaders of our city, and we thank you for the opportunity that you've given us to trust us with much, as the parable of talent suggests. For much has been given, much is required. But as you are generous with gifts of wisdom and talent, we ask that we, as in the parable, will double that, will be generous with how we invest our time, our energy, and we will do what you've required us to do for this city to be what you desire it to be. We thank you again for this collective of wealth, the collective of talent, the collective of wisdom, and we ask that in this time, we're able to do all that we can do to better people's life and to make this world a better place. We ask for those special blessings on all of us. Amen. Amen.
Thank you very much. May we have your report?
Yes, the agenda for the September 30th, 2025, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on September 26th, 2025, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. I'm going to rearrange the agenda for just a moment and ask that item 9D be read into
Item D 9D is City Attorney regarding status update on the activities of the Charter Review Committee pertaining to council districts, directly elected mayor, council compensation, and miscellaneous matters. One providing direction.
Thank you. I recognize Mr. Casacyan.
Thank you, Mayor. I have read the report, but there's also approximately 17 or 18 hours of video of these meetings. I thought I could, and I was very ambitious. I usually watch the meetings I miss in 1.5 or double the speed sometimes so I can catch up, but even with my best efforts, I haven't made a dent in that. I would like to go back and at least watch certain specific meetings before I participate in a discussion. I don't know if my colleagues also feel that they need more time. I'll certainly defer to them, but I would like to make the request that this item be continued to a future date. I think in discussing with the city manager when it would be appropriate, he was mentioning that early November would be a time when we could revisit this. So that is my request.
Thank you. I'll take that as a motion to continue, and if there's any objections, we can discuss it. If there's no objections, we will then place this on the November 4th calendar with a full council.
Correct, Mayor. That's when we have full council.
Discussion, full council and a full city attorney. One of those weeks in between where missing our city attorney, and we want our city attorney here as a valuable member of our team.
My staff appreciates that.
Thank you. Well, we can baptize them with fire, too, but we will go with you. So, everyone, I'm sorry if you came here wishing to speak on item 9D. However, you would be able to speak to us in the general oral communications portion at the end of the meeting or during the first part, which is a three-minute or less component after our consent calendar. So if you're interested in that. Are there any cards submitted, by the way, Madam Clerk for item 9D?
Mayor Najarian, yes, we have a number of cards. We have actually five cards on this.
Okay, if one of your staff could, in the back, ascertain whether the folks want to switch that to the three-minute oral communications or the five-minute oral communications, we will accommodate them. But again, we apologize for switching this up on you.
Or just if not, then November 4th?
Yeah, if not, if not, we'll have a full council discussion and presentation on November 4th on this matter. Thank you. Let's go to the next item on the agenda, item 3.
Item 3 are presentations on appointments. Item A, proclamation declaring September 27th, 2025 as Native American Day.
Thank you. I do have a proclamation from the City of Glendale honoring Native Americans and naming today as Native American Day. The City of Glendale proudly recognizes Native American Day, honoring the enduring culture, traditions, and contributions of Native Americans. Today, we celebrate their lasting impact on our community and state and encourage all residents to honor their heritage and support future generations. Is there anyone here from the Native American community? I know we may have had a difficult time reaching them. Well, thank you, and let's have a round of applause for Native American Day. And will you read the next item?
The next item is proclamation declaring September as National Hispanic Heritage Month.
Thank you, and I know we have several in the audience to receive this. You would like to come forward?
Hello. Buenas noches. Good evening.
Let's wait for your ensemble to come forward, and let's see you all. Thank you. Let me read the short message. The City of Glendale proudly proclaims September 15th to October 15th as National Hispanic Heritage Month, honoring the history, culture, and many contributions of Hispanic and Latino communities that continue to enrich our city. From music, art, and cuisine to leadership, innovation, and labor, Glendale celebrates the vibrancy and strength of our Hispanic heritage. Now I turn it over to you. Thank you.
Okay, good evening, Mayor Najarian, council members, and city staff. On behalf of the Latino and Spanish-speaking community in Glendale, we would like to thank you for this proclamation recognizing Hispanic Heritage Month. This acknowledgement celebrates the rich history, culture, and contributions of Latinos here in Glendale and throughout the nation. We have 33 countries in Latin America and the Caribbean, including Mexico, Belize, Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, Nicaragua, Panama, Cuba, República Dominicana, Puerto Rico, Argentina, Bolivia, Brazil, Chile, Colombia, Ecuador, Paraguay, Peru, Uruguay, Venezuela, and Spanish is the official language in 20 of these countries. According to the 2020 U.S. Census, in Glendale, we have 18.5% of the population of Latino origin. This is around 33,000 people. So you're going to find us everywhere. We're going to be your coworkers, your neighbors, city employees, librarians, police officers, doctors. You're going to find us everywhere. Latinos bring passion and energy to this city through our culture, our food, our music, our rich traditions. We have so much to be proud of and even more to accomplish. Latinos don't look away. We show up, we work hard for our community, we push forward, we rise, we love our city. Diversity makes Glendale stronger, and together with all of you, we will continue to shape the future of this city and this country we call home. We are grateful to the City of Glendale for your continued support and partnership. Together, we can celebrate diversity and strengthen the bonds that make Glendale such a vibrant and inclusive city. Juntos podemos lograr cualquier cosa. Together, we can achieve anything. Thank you again for this recognition and for joining us in celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month. Thank you. And if we can just invite you, we have two events coming up. One tomorrow, the Hispanic Heritage Month mixer from the Glendale Latino Association at Glendale Community College at 5:30 p.m., and on November 1st, our Dia de los Muertos event at the Glendale Central Library. Thank you. Anyone else would like to share?
Would you like to introduce your supporters?
Yes, well, myself, I'm Guillermo Garcia. I'm the president of the Glendale Latino Association, and why don't you come and say your name immediately?
Hi, I'm Christian Wymer Hernandez.
Hi, City of Glendale. My name is Diana Hernandez, and I am the chair of the Adelante Latinos, which is the Committee for Glendale Unified School District, and I am honored to represent the Adelante Latino Board this evening, which includes Miguel Gonzalez, Brenda Becerril, Natalie Lewis, Natalia Lewis, Jessica De La O, Mariano Morua, Beatrice Bautista Fojos, Christian Wymer Hernandez, and Christine Benitez. And we are here because we are dedicated to the advancement, support, and success of all of the students of Hispanic and Latino heritage in the Glendale Unified School Districts. Since our founding in 2003, we have worked tirelessly to honor and support and engage our students and families. Our first year in 2003, we recognized 45 graduating Latinos, and last year, we celebrated 187 high school graduates with GPAs above 3.0 and 161 eighth graders who achieved, once again, a GPA of 3.0 or higher, and we are hoping to once again continue to do that. Our committee is made up of GUSD employees, families, students, and community members and representing many of the Latin American and Hispanic families, and it is our absolute pleasure to be here with the Glendale Latinos Association, the City of Glendale, to have Hispanic Heritage Month honored. So thank you very much to our mayor and to our city council members.
Thank you. Council members, it's an honor to be here, and thank you as well. As Guillermo already told you regarding this proclamation, it really brings together community, and it helps us celebrate cultural heritage, which is incredibly important. I would like to introduce myself, Anita Quiñones Gabrielian. I'm immediate past president of the Glendale Latino Association, an organization that has been around for over 34 years, and what we do is we connect community and we raise funds for scholarships. Last year, we gave out 26 scholarships and a total of $30,000. So far, we've given out $357,000 with your help and with the help of our community. So with that, I would like to introduce, or would you like to introduce yourselves? We have a lot of supporters here, and I think Adelante Latinos already introduced them. If anybody else wants to say anything, I just want to say gracias y si se puede, and I hope to see you tomorrow at Glendale Community College Student Center.
Hi. I'm Natalia Lewis. I'm a member of Adelante Latino and also a proud mother of two children with special needs, so I appreciate what you're doing in the community, and I filled out your survey, so I hope to get a call for the roundtable. So I'm really grateful for Glendale and what they're doing for the special needs community as well. Thank you.
Would you like to say?
Thank you all. Okay.
Hi, my name is Sharon Cifuentes. I'm one of the members of the Adelante Latinos. I wanted to thank you guys for helping us out and representing Hispanics throughout the community and for making sure any student feels supported and heard throughout the Glendale Unified District.
Councilmember Asadrian?
Good evening, city council and staff. Just wanted to say I am a proud member of the Glendale Latino Association and the 2014 woman, Glendale Latino Woman of the Year, a long Mexican heritage in my family, and it is a pleasure to work with this group and all that they do for Glendale.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Yes?
Well, I just wanted to say a few words, not in just celebration of the incredible culture and diversity that you bring to the city, but I also want to take this opportunity to recognize that I know that it's been a very difficult time for the Latinx and Hispanic community. You are supported here, and we appreciate everything you do to enrich the city. We are one, and anything that happens to the Latinx community, very similar, I take it upon myself as if it were happening to my own, because we are all one. So thank you for standing up for your own community, and I hope that in the months ahead, we'll see less of what we're seeing on the streets and more support for the diversity that we celebrate here in Glendale. So thank you for enriching our city.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'll just add a few words as well as your making your way down. First of all, I think it's very appropriate that we're honoring Native American heritage as well as Hispanic heritage, Latino heritage at the same meeting, because when people study Glendale's history and its roots, it is rooted in those two communities. You have the Native American people here, followed by the Spanish settlers who came here, which is where we get a lot of the names of our important sites and landmarks from the Verdugo Mountains that are named for the person who was granted the original land grant to the Adobe San Rafael and the Catalina Verdugo Adobe, and it was such a strong part of the Glendale heritage that at one point, there was a Days of Verdugo Festival in Glendale. It was a big celebration with a parade down Brand Boulevard that used to celebrate the Spanish and Latino heritage of our community. So congratulations, thank you, and we are richer for everyone's presence in this community. Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Why don't we pose for a picture? If we all turn around, Anita and Guillermo and the leaders. I'm going to stand behind you. No, no, it works. It works. Thank you very much, everyone. And what is next?
Next are consent items. The following are routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before motion is proposed. Mayor Najarian, we have two items, public speakers on two items, items 4F and 4G.
Okay, since they're requesting separate consideration, let's move the, will someone move the balance of the consent calendar?
I'll move the balance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Asadrian.
Yes.
Rotman.
Yes.
Carpetyan.
Yes.
Casacyan.
Yes.
Mayor Najarian.
Yes. 4F, please.
4F is Public Works regarding assignment of the Agreement for Business and Multifamily Solid Waste Collection Services in Zone C, Contract R107072 between the City of Glendale and Waste Resource Technologies, Inc. One resolution authorizing assignment of the Agreement for Business and Multifamily Solid Waste Collection Service in Zone C from Waste Resource Technologies, Inc., Contract R107072 to Waste Management of California, Inc.
And will you please call the speaker for?
Yes, we have, the first speaker is Herbert Milano.
Good evening, Mayor Najarian, members of the city council. My name is Herbert Milano. I am here to speak against the proposal, or what's before you, to transfer the franchise now currently held by this franchisee to Waste Management. I believe that four years ago or so, the city granted a monopoly to four different entities. I believe that there were six different bidders for this particular franchise opportunity. At the end of the day, a franchise is a regional monopoly when it comes to the waste management. And I have personally seen increases in my waste disposal of nearly 500%, and I know that for many individuals in the multifamily sector, this has been a significant increase in our costs, and I believe that individuals with single-family homes eventually, when they moved into this type of arrangement, they will also see significant increases. The problem that I have with this is that there was an RFP back then, and the RFP was to select, right, the best companies to service at the lowest possible price, I guess. That was the objective of the RFP. But last year, with Measure A, you removed the ability of the city to basically conduct the, these RFPs without the fear that they will simply be overridden by the city council. The Measure A removes, say, significant safeguards with regard to the RFP. It's significant, and that is the reason why it was in the charter. It was presented to the general public as if it were a simplification or to expedite or to modernize it, all vague terms. But what happens now is that Waste Management, if they get a hold of this particular franchise, they already hold 36% of the nation's waste hauling. They, and I think Republic, hold more than 50%, and I don't think we should be supporting and aiming to have more monopolies controlling more and more of our commerce, especially one where we actually have no choice but to simply accept. And if they remove the others as well and they acquire them, we basically will have a single monopoly eventually, and I don't think that's good for the residents, it is not good for our pocketbook, and it is a terrifically bad precedent. We don't want to promote monopolies that control these very essential services. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Edmond Hakobian.
Thank you. Good evening, council members. My name is Edmond Hakobian, and I want to speak on agenda item 4F. I'm requesting opening up the Zone C contract for RFPs again. As the previous speaker mentioned, this is creating monopolies. The City of Los Angeles went through the same process, and they created districts, and it was done for the intent of reducing pollution and reducing multiple service providers driving their trucks in the same area. That was one of the main reasons for it. However, logically, you would think that if one vendor is taking over a district and they are scheduling all the rides, that means they are having more customers in the area. That should lower the price of the service, not increase it. Okay? So I want to, so that's my request to open it up for an RFP, but also I want to ask the city manager to also provide clarifications on a few things to help me and all the residents understand these contracts. So can you please direct staff to provide a report on the percentage of annual fee increases by each vendor in each district? And why are we not issuing an RFP for this one? Also, if Measure A was not passed last year, would you still be able to reassign this contract to another vendor issuing, without issuing a new RFP? Thank you.
Thank you, and that was the last public comment.
Okay. Mr. Carpetyan?
Yes, to Mr. Milano's point, I asked the same question as far as monopoly goes or single hauler having more control than the others, and I want the city manager to please clarify as to the Waste Management doesn't have any other contract in the city, right? In the other zones?
That is correct, Councilmember, Councilmember Carpetyan.
So they're not, by acquiring this operator, they're not basically having the right for two zones?
Correct. They will only be operating in Zone C.
Yeah, because I was within the same mindset that not one operator will have two or three zones in the city, although I was not part of the decision-making body when these contracts were awarded, but I asked the same question, and Mr. Milano, that's the answer, that they are going to only operating in one zone, and also did their contract indicate when, if they sell their rights to another hauler, if the hauler is qualified, we have to agree to have the new hauler service that area?
Councilmember Carpetyan, I wouldn't categorize it as we have to, but it's at the discretion of the city manager, and I have passed and examined the qualification of Waste Management, and as was stated, Waste Management is one of the largest private haulers in California, so they are well-qualified, capable, and have capacity to conduct these operations in that one zone.
That's interesting, because if for some reason the council decides, no, let's go for an RFP, and RFP is, you know, kind of awarded to another hauler, then what happens for them selling their rights to Waste Management?
I would say in that case, Waste Management will have to transfer those rights to the successful, successful hauler who has proposed and been selected.
Got it. Thank you.
So, yeah, I think that obviously there's the need to have a smooth transition for the ratepayers and the people who are having their waste hauled by Waste Management. It's been noted that it's one of the larger companies, and there's some advantages of that, but the reason why I supported having the haulers that we voted to assign to the different zones is because we want that particular type of service where residents and people are able to call and get someone on the phone. We have a major issue in parts of our city with people dumping trash, and it's sometimes sitting there, and we want the responsiveness. That was one of the reasons why I think all of our current franchisers were so good at, you know, they would get a call, they would go out there and pick it up. Sometimes we'd have to call them a few times, but I think they got the message of what we value as a community. So my concern with this transfer is whether Waste Management, being as large as they are, are going to be committed, and how can we hold them to that commitment to have people who understand this committee on staff, who understand this community on staff, who are responsible and accessible to individuals, that someone from the public doesn't call and get stuck in a phone tree in a loop in some, you know, AI answering bot. I want those types of assurances as this is transferred over, if it's going to transfer.
Yes, Councilmember Casacyan, those are very valid concerns and points that you've made. I have personally met with representatives from Waste Management, and they have assured me, because, as a matter of fact, the size of their company, they are more capable of providing that level of customer service that our customers are accustomed to. All that said, despite the assurances, we do have a system of All that said, despite the assurances, we, we do have a system of logging complaints that we get through our Public Works Department, Waste Management Department, and we will, as part of the franchise agreement that we've signed with all the haulers, we do hold them accountable, and we do work with them to correct, course-correct any, uh, any lack of proper customer service on a regular basis with them.
I just want that assurance, and I want to be on the record making that request. Thank you.
Councilmember Sotirian?
So I had a meeting with staff a couple of weeks ago on the bulky item issue altogether. This has been an issue that residents have raised time and again. And speaking to some of the haulers, they had also mentioned that, um, while they have , uh, trucks going around in the different neighborhoods, unless the request has been made, uh, through the system, then they're not sure whether it's actually a donation that's sitting out there, or if it's a, if it's something to be picked up. Um, I had looked at our internal systems for bulky item pickup, and you can't, you know, for the average person in public, you can't tell whether it's a bulky item or another trash thing that's named in the system. And looking at ways that we streamline the process where if somebody's submitting a bulky item pickup, it automatically goes to the trash haulers. I will note that while I was not on the council when these contracts came up and were voted on, uh, one of my biggest issues with the contracts is the unfair system for individuals that are in the multifamilies versus the single-family households. Single-family households actually get their free bulky item pickup through the city, whereas multifamily buildings, I think the maximum is at two, um, and then beyond that, they would actually have to pay for the bulky item pickup. Now, what has transpired in practice is individuals realizing that if they just submit it anonymously on, uh, the app, or they call, then it's already taken care of. And so I feel like we've created this system that actually doesn't work in practice, and maybe these are not things that we had kind of thought through when we were giving out these contracts, but, uh, there's been a promise made from staff that they're gonna be talking to the haulers and then, uh, bringing something for us to take a look at as, um, opportunities. So I'm happy to support this with the understanding that you guys are, the staff is gonna be looking at this bulky item, um, part of the contracts, not just for this hauler, but beyond.
Yeah, Councilmember Sotirian, appreciate your comments, although not related to this assignment.
Kind of is, if I'm approving it.
Right. Well, with all due respect, we can condition the approval of this assignment on the, uh, resolution of a bulky item process. That said, though, we will work with the trash haulers, our waste haulers moving forward. Those are, you were right, those were the terms that were negotiated when we awarded these contracts, so we'll have to start negotiations with individual haulers.
So would I need to, is this gonna be part of the list that you have, that you will bring something back? Or do I need to make an official request? Because I don't want to end up in a situation where six months later, I'm being told that I should have made a public, official request.
Yeah, this will have to go on new business item, agenda items for discussion and direction from council.
Okay, so I'm putting in that request for next meeting.
We'll place that on the agenda. Uh, so I have just a few comments. First off, I would like to thank Waste Resource Technologies for being, uh, a strong presence in the community for, how many years has it been? Five years? Four years? Uh, they were good corporate citizens, and I think they gave outstanding service to our residents. I'd like to welcome, pending the approval of this, the Waste Management team. We are setting high standards for you in the City of Glendale. As you can hear from some of our discussions, we demand the utmost in customer service. We're very price-sensitive. Uh, we expect you to go above and beyond your, your typical, uh, waste collection and disposal, uh, services. If I don't, if I'm not mistaken, when we did the RFP way back when, we did not limit one, uh, company per zone. I think everyone applied, and they could apply for as many zones as they wanted. And as it turned out, it was our decision to give them to different, uh, providers. If I also remember correctly, Waste Management, uh, applied and were a very strong candidate in the process. I might be mistaken, but I believe that they were, they were a submission for the RFP. They may have come in fifth place, if I'm not mistaken about that also. Uh, the other, uh, the other thing I'd like to point out, and because they're such a large company, uh, they have something that no other waste hauler in our city has, and that is, they have, they own their own series of landfills throughout the county. So when Shoal closes in two years, three years, or wherever we're set for it to close, the other waste haulers are gonna be scrambling to find out where to place their waste, whereas Waste Management will have their landfills available for, um, for disposal, and they will be, of course, we can't say they're not gonna raise prices, or anyone's gonna raise prices, but I think they'll be resistant to price increases due to a lack of, uh, a dump, a landfill facility. So I, I don't have any problems approving this assignment. If there's nothing else, we'll-
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Asadrian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Carpetyan?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes. We're at 4G, I believe.
Yes, 4G City Attorney regarding requests for conflict of interest waiver in legal representation by Holland &amp; Hart LLP. A motion authorizing the city attorney to consent to the Southern California Public Power Authority's, uh, execution of a conflict of interest waiver for Holland &amp; Hart LLP for an unrelated matter and for future SCPPA conflict waivers for unrelated matters.
Mr. City Attorney, this is up your alley, is it not?
Sure, is there a question, or is that-
Uh, we do have a speaker, um, but I can imagine what the question is. Let's hear the speaker.
We have one speaker, Beth Brooks.
I'm channeling, I'm channeling your comments.
Nice to see you, nice to see you. Everybody finished, uh, their vacations and they're taking off and all the other stuff? Great. Uh, no, my question is just because I, you know, I have a problem with, you know, uh, conflict of waiver, you know, for future issues. You never know what's gonna happen with, uh, what the city is going through. I just don't like that you would be ruling on something for future issues, because you never know what your relationship is gonna be with, uh, any of these groups. So I don't, I don't think that that's a good idea. I mean, if you're gonna do something that's related to an issue right now, that's fine, but if you're gonna say, oh, you know, and in the future, also, we're gonna waive that, I don't think that's a good idea, because you can't really predict the future. So that's all I have to say about that. But I'll have more to say later.
Briefly, Mr. Garcia, if you could explain what this waiver is all about.
Sure. So Holland &amp; Hart, uh, has a longstanding, uh, relationship with the city, representing the city in, uh, power purchase agreements for GWP and renewable power agreements, those sorts of things. Um, this particular waiver, uh, this is the second time Holland &amp; Hart has requested a waiver. They've done a lot of work for us, and in this particular case, they do work for, for SCAPA. Um, they, in this particular case, they've represented the counterparty on matters wholly unrelated to this, uh, this particular transaction. And given their breadth and depth in this field, we anticipate it will, it'll occur in the future, and all we're asking for is authority to, subject to our, to my approval as the city attorney, to, to, uh, issue further waivers when they're related to matters not related to the City of Glendale. And that's what this is, this, the waiver that they're, they're seeking has, has to do with a transaction, a purchase transaction not related to Glendale. So that's all we're, we're simply asking, so we don't have to come back every time when they're, when they're really unrelated matters, uh, that they require the waiver for.
Thank you. Questions or a motion?
I'll make the motion.
4G. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Asadrian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Carpetyan?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes. Go to item five.
Item five is City Council staff comments, including reports from conferences and regional meetings.
Okay, if there's no objection, I'm gonna start to my right with Mr. Brotman.
Um, well, I will just say I apologize for last week's cancellation. Uh, I, uh, came down with COVID and couldn't make it, and I think that meant we didn't have a quorum. So, um, apologies for anybody who was expecting to come and heard at the last minute that we were canceling. But I am negative now. Even though I still sound a little funny, I'm, I'm in the clear.
Thank you. Ms. Sotirian?
Um, I have two items I'd like to place on new business. Uh, one is, uh, looking at directing the Arts Commission or staff to come up with some programming ideas for the $15 million that's sitting in our public arts fund. Um, it's been sitting there for a very long time, and, uh, these are funds that were accumulated over the years through development projects, where instead of the developer actually putting out public art, um, they ended up paying us the fees. Um, I really would like some sort of program or project, um, on this, if there isn't one that staff is already putting together. Um, and then the second is, um, I've been hearing from some parents, uh, that have children with special needs, especially children that have autism. Um, one of the issues that was raised was that they're unable to take their children to our parks, because children with autism tend to run off, uh, without any fencing or gates, uh, which forces them to take their children to parks in Los Angeles and surrounding areas that actually have those. Um, I have connected the parents with our Parks Director, but I would like to formalize for us to take a look at if we can at least have one of our parks, you know, for us to do an assessment, and to have at least one of our parks be something that, you know, parents with, kids with autism can actually take, and anything else that may come out of some of that task force meeting that we're gonna end up having. And I've also asked the parents to, to come, because I think it's important for all of my colleagues to hear.
Mr. Galanian?
Yes, Mayor Najarian, I'm a City Council, Councilmember Asadrian. Uh, we can certainly add the second item to the new business agenda, but as far as the first one's concerned, as a matter of fact, I have, uh, asked, I have directed our Director of Library and Arts and Culture to come up with a drawdown plan as part of her goals, as part of her performance evaluation, and that she's currently working on. And I believe the fund balance is $9 million, not 15, but we can certainly verify that. So that doesn't need to, uh, we don't need direction from council for that plan. She's already working on it.
And then in the back, I see our new Deputy Police Chief, Robert Williams. Just wanna say congratulations to you. Um, I know we had the swearing-in ceremony that I wasn't able to be present at, but congratulations to you and to every, yes. We had several promotions and some new blood that has joined our police department, and just so wanna say thank you and congratulations.
Mr. Kasakian?
Uh, thank you. I was not on vacation. Uh, I was actually not here, because I had committed months ago to, um, speak at a, uh, conference for the California New Motor Vehicle Board, of which I am an appointee of the state. Uh, and there was a, uh, conference that I had agreed to, because I knew that we were dark on this day, uh, on the day when, uh, we had the special meeting. Um, and, uh, so that's why I was not, uh, at the meeting, because I had made a prior commitment in a, a different capacity that was also related to service to the public of the state of California. So I know that there's this assumption that we have time to take vacations. I can assure you that myself and now my colleagues really get a lot of time for vacations. I would urge folks who assume that to be more curious and judgmental, um, so even their nice comments don't feel like digs against, uh, their public servants. Uh, I will also say that I had made a request year, uh, about a year ago to have grants in, uh, Arts and Culture, about five $12,000 grants, a $60,000 pot every year that we could maybe have nonprofits apply to, that they could benefit from. I'd like a status, a report as to when that will be coming to council for consideration.
Yes, Councilmember Kasakian, as a matter of fact, I was looking at it last night. City Attorney has reviewed and opined on that item, and it should be coming to council, um, towards the end of this year, uh, early December.
Thank you. Um, I'll be waiting for that. And lastly, uh, there, we have e-waste collection centers in Glendale, or we have one, um, that's a, off San Fernando, and the hours of its operation, I believe, are 7:30 AM to 4:45 PM. Um, I would like to see us look into what, how effective that is, what we can do to improve on it, because the hours that it's operating, I don't know how successful we are in collecting it, uh, e-waste. And as well as on the website, it says that lots of items, uh, there's a, um, page where there's a list of items accepted and not accepted. Lots of items are not on the list. Uh, curling irons, flat irons, I'm told, remote-controlled toys, uh, and, uh, of the items listed, there are two columns, accepted and accepted for a fee, but it does not say what the fee is. So if someone decides that, you know, they don't want to or can't pay the fee, then the e-waste just goes directly into our landfills. Perhaps we need more specificity, we need some education and information out there, as well as evaluating whether these hours work, or perhaps changing it so people are able to drop off the e-waste at the end of the workday when they're headed home. I know that I myself, when I wanna donate things to Goodwill, Salvation Army, or elsewhere, you know, sometimes it'll stay, and maybe some of you can relate, it'll be in my trunk for a few days, if not more, um, until I find the time, because we're all very busy with our lives. Um, and if we have this specific time of 7:30 AM to 4:45 PM, I'm wondering how many people are not taking advantage of this. And perhaps maybe even doing a publicized e-waste collection day, where it's open over a couple of days for people to do their spring cleaning and get rid of those old cellphones, you know, those pagers, if you still have a pager, BlackBerries, whatever else you may be storing and don't want to put into landfill. So that is my request. Um, I don't know if we need a report on that. I would just like staff to explore that, look into it, and I'll be fine with a memo. Okay. That's all. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Carpetyan?
Yes, I have a few events, two, two, not, not the events, a few events that I attended. Uh, this month, I was a mayor pro temp in the absence of Mayor Najarian. I, uh, attended several meetings and represented the city. Uh, first one was the Chamber of Commerce Annual Gala, and I was, uh, I was honored to install their officers. Uh, we celebrated Armenian Independence Day at Verdugo Park, like they do every year. Thank you to the organizers. And same evening, uh, we, we, uh, attended the Voices of Artach Choir in Alex Theater, Bizfed, uh, 11th Annual Freshmen Policymakers. This is when all the, most of the elected officials come together. Business Federation has a big gala every, every year, and they exchange ideas. Uh, Police Department's promotional and swearing-in ceremony. Uh, we had several new officers that joined our department, as well as promoting, uh, some of our current officers. And, uh, congratulations again to Deputy Chief Robert Williams. Please give him a big, big round of applause. He was here. He started, he started in Glendale as a, as a, as a volunteer first and as a cadet, so there, that's what the hard work pays off. This is a perfect example of it. Um, Employee Service Award Ceremony acknowledgement. Uh, this is what, when we acknowledge and appreciate all our employees that have, uh, five, in five-year increments, five-year, 10-year, 15-year service, 20-year service, and the highlight was our, uh, city manager for his 25th year service to City of Glendale. Thank you, Mr. Galanian, and job well done, and continue the, the good work. We had an employee that had over 35 years and still working in Glendale. Like, what was the gentleman's name? If you remember.
Carlos.
Najari.
Yeah, Carlos Linares, and our Maintenance Services.
Yeah, he's, he's, he's pushing 40 years of service, so he's over 35 years of service in Glendale, and that's a lifetime. Um, we also had a community meeting organized by, um, Rosmo and, and Royal Canyon Homeroes Associations. Uh, this was a packed, packed room, if you will, and, uh, the community voiced their opinion about, uh, the land use element, the SLA, and the coro. So it was, it was a, a big pushback about using this, this parking lot as, as development projects. Uh, so what I would like to add- Uh, so what I would like to ask is, when the report comes back, Mr. City Manager, I know that we're preparing a report for our land use element and coro and the SLA. Uh, I think SLA that, you know, for us, providing uh this information to state or registering this, this parking lots uh for SLA, I believe it was a mistake. I think we need to withdraw our application and remove this, this parking lot from Surplus Land Act. Also, all the parking lots on Verdugo and Canyada Boulevard and Montrose uh needs to be removed from the land use element. When the report comes back, let's look into if we wanna withdraw our application, if there's a way of doing it or not. And the, the community was very, very clear that they don't want these lots to be developed, and some of them are not even zoned to be uh residential development sites. Uh, we also had a very peaceful uh candlelight vigil for Charlie Kirk, uh, which was violently assassinated. Uh, political assassination is not welcoming Glendale, and I uh, it has to stop some rhetoric that this is a, this is a basically result of the rhetoric that is going on and on, calling people in different names over and over and over again, and this is what happens. I'm gonna leave it at that, and it happens sometimes here as well, but we need to, we need to really be careful as to how we characterize things and how we label people. As far as the, the parks, uh, Councilwoman Osatrian mentioned, parks that have fences. We have Maple Park that we installed Shane's Inspiration uh playground equipment that is all-inclusive for uh children with disabilities as well, so all children can play together. And we had the same issue that children will run on the street, and we put a fence around that, uh, Maple Park. Maple Park has a fence, has the, uh, the playground equipment, Shane's Inspiration, which is all-inclusive. If I'm not mistaken, the Car Park has, uh, on Colorado Boulevard has a fence, as well as the one, I don't know what's it called, but on the corner of Las Feliz and uh...
Cerritos?
Cerritos. That has a fence all the way around the park as well. For people to know, I mean, it's a great idea, we, we can look into it to maybe do more of these, because it's a safety issue, but these, these parks, they already have that.
So I'm not, if I may, I'm not sure that it meets the requirements that they're looking for, so I think it's just really up to those that are experiencing it and then have our park staff look at it, 'cause
Sure.
Just because it's, I don't know what the fence requirement would be or what the gate would be, 'cause I know, for example, Palmer Park has a gate, right? But it's, the door, there's a door that's open, as an example, so.
Right.
Yeah.
No, what I'm saying is gate around the park, it's, it's all gated, but let them look into it, not a problem. And lastly is the, is the, the issue of the BRT. Uh, I think we need to really let people know uh what this project is all about, and if SB 79 is signed into law by our governor, you're gonna have a big issue on our hand, wherever that stops of the BRT is. It's, it's going to really open up the door for, for massive developments on the route of that, that bus line. Nobody's against the public transportation, but Glendale is the only city that has a dedicated lane. Over 95 or 98% of the, the route that in Glendale has dedicated bus lane. So wherever you have a dedicated bus lane, BRT will apply. If you don't have, like Burbank is half and half, half dedicated, half uh mixed flow. North Hollywood doesn't have one, and Pasadena doesn't have one either. Glendale is the only city. Again, I'm not against the public transportation, but we need to look into it and really let people know what's, what the ramification of this uh bus line would be, that this BRT would be. That's all, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a few comments. Tomorrow is Transit Day, and all transit, public transit in Los Angeles County is absolutely free. That means MetroLink, our entire lines that actually go to six different counties, the MTA buses, the MTA BRTs, which is a great system, by the way, you really have to see it, uh, the subways, the light rails, the metro bikes, and the metro micro are all free tomorrow on Transit Day. I was not in town last week. Uh, the reason is I was traveling in Armenia at no expense to the taxpayer. All expenses were paid by yours truly. I think I spent about three months of the council salary on that. Uh, we don't get paid that much, so that's how it turns out to be, three months. When I was there, I was able to meet with our sister-city representatives. We have a sister-city relationship with the Central District of Yerevan. Uh, they are doing, and it's a very young guy, incidentally, it was refreshing, I, I suppose, in some regards, he had a lot of great ideas. They have great public art in Yerevan. They have great mini-parks in Yerevan. They're really pushing to have all sorts of activity in just the smallest parcels of land. I mean, uh, playground equipment, mini soccer fields, uh, picnic areas. It was uh very nice to see that. I also visited our sister-city of Gumri, which is to the north of Armenia. I have pictures too, but I didn't want this to be a show-and-tell on Najarian's ventures in Armenia. Uh, met with the mayor there, and we talked a little bit about ways they could increase their revenue. They are at a disadvantage. They don't feel that they're getting the tax revenue back from uh the federal government that they deserve. They say they pay more in than they get back. Where have we heard that before? We discussed how Glendale raises uh revenue. Uh, we touched upon the, the uh TOT, the hotel tax, which they do not impose, and I told them in Glendale, we're at 12%, and they're like, you know, the light bulb went on over the mayor's head, and, "Oh gee, we can charge?" I said, "Yes, you can charge. Your local hotel doesn't pay it, but the visitors do." So they were excited about that. Also a city with great art and culture. The, the mayors and the representatives from both those regions were very happy to see me, and they have asked me to extend the invitation uh as soon as possible to get visits from uh my council colleagues, whether they're seated as mayor or not. I also met with the Minister of Transportation and Infrastructure, a very good meeting. We talked about uh roadway design. I couldn't sell them on bike lanes, unfortunately, in the middle of the city, uh, because it's still a little bit too congested, but we talked about that. I told them uh what we do in Glendale. We talked about transit, some of their new transit buses that they're using. The uh next meeting I had was with the Minister of, Deputy Minister of the Economy, who uh wanted to express his interest in letting the residents of Glendale know that there's great products coming from Armenia, wines, liquors, cognac, uh, dried fruits, handiwork, uh, other products that would be a big boost to the Armenian economy if their market increases in Glendale. This is something, nothing new, but we've been working on this uh throughout, but he emphasized how important that would be and how beneficial it would be. Uh, they have welcomed everyone in Glendale, Armenian or non-Armenian, to come and visit Armenia. It's a very dynamic, cosmopolitan, fun city to be in with great historical, I mean, you wanna talk about historic, I mean, our Historic Preservation uh Commission would, would go bananas if they saw some of the, the work that has been preserved uh in Armenia, and invited everyone to come out and visit. It's always a good time to visit. And that is all I have. Mr. Galanian? Anything from the
No, thank you.
Okay. Let's move on then.
The next item, item six, is community event announcements. Three minutes per speaker. Members of the public will be permitted to announce upcoming events taking place in the community. We have one speaker card on this item.
Before you call that person's name, is it Mr. Dish? I see him up. Uh, I did neglect to announce a few items coming up this week. Tomorrow is National Walk to School Day, where every elementary school in particular, others as well, will hold uh a walk fest where students from around the neighborhood, rather than be placed in a vehicle, will be encouraged to walk to school. It's very fun uh to see that and to participate in that. Saturday, uh, October 4th, from 12 noon to 10 p.m., is the 46th Annual Montrose Oktoberfest. You know what that means. Lot of pretzels. Also, on October 4th, we have the Jewel City Concert Series at the Artsakh Paseo, featuring Low Poly Cactus, which is a jazz fusion funk group. And throughout, uh, just a reminder, the Alex Theater celebrated its 100th anniversary. They have great shows, concerts, and events. You can see what those, what that program, uh, programming is on the Alex Theater website. Okay. Madam Clerk, I turn it back to you.
Uh, for community event announcements, we have one speaker, and that's Alan Dish.
Thank you, Mrs. Badjin. Good evening, City Council. My name's Alan Dish. I, Alan Dish cordially invite you to the ca, uh, the council staff, members of the public, to attend a free concert this Sunday, October the 5th, 2025, at 7:00 in the evening. It will be at the Alex Theater, which just celebrated 100 years. Uh, the concert will be featuring Lark Musical Society. It was, it's celebrating its 35th year, basically, and I had had the privilege of attending Learning Music there. So uh, students of Lark Conservatory will be performing piano, or chorus orchestra, dance ensemble, jazz quintet, children's choir, soloists Anahit Narcissian, soprano, Hibbert Sarjan baritone, Fred Sinkawitz trumpet. Again, Alex Theater this Sunday, October the 5th, 2025, 7:00 p.m., open to the public, free of charge. I will also be singing in the choir. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Satrian?
Mr. Dish, I'm, Mr. Dish, I'm gonna be joining. I was one of the first students Lark had for piano when they first opened up.
Before we go on to the next item, I wanna remind anyone who may have come in after my initial announcement that item 9D, the charter discussion with the Charter Review Committee results, is being continued to November 4th. Uh, if you did come to make a comment, now is an opportunity to do so. I'll accept a late card. Otherwise, you can speak at the end of this meeting, but if you came here to speak to that, I don't wanna disappoint you, you could speak at this point. Any takers? Okay, seeing none. Let's move on to the next item.
Next item is item seven, First Period of Oral Communications, maximum three minutes per speaker, 30-minute aggregate speaking time limit. Members of the public may address the council on agenda items or non-agenda items within the city council's subject matter jurisdiction. If a speaker addresses the council on an agenda item during the first period of oral communications, they may not speak again when the agenda item is called. A speaker who addresses the council on non-agenda items during the first period of oral communications may not speak during the second period of oral communications. Mayor Najarian, we have 11 speaker cards.
We'll give everyone three minutes. We're close enough to our 30-minute.
Our first speaker is Sean Chukarian. Following Sean is Mike Mohill and Tony Passarella.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Sean Chukarian, and I'm a resident of Glendale. I'm here to voice my opinion opposing proposals to create districts in Glendale. Under the current system, I can vote for every city council seat, which means I have a vote in who represents the entire city. District elections would take that away. Each of us would lose our say in most seats, and we would have council members become accountable to the people in their own neighborhoods as opposed to the entire city. And the concern here is that this risks creating political silos, further dividing the people of Glendale. And as your own Charter Review Committee found after months of study, there is no legal requirement to make this change, and there's no local problem it will solve. I urge you to respect the committee's work and oppose any changes to the current system we have in election of our city council members. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Mike Mohill. Following Mike is Tony Passarella and Alan Dish.
Good evening, Glendale residents. My name is Mike Mohill. Councilmembers, could you read my lips when I spoke to the audience right there and introduced my name? You're doing a disservice. People who, who read lips cannot see my face, and by the camera being behind my head, which is the new rule to silence the public, anybody who reads lips can't. So why don't you bring back the camera in front of everybody's face? And everybody will be fair. You always talk about being fairness to everybody, where there are people here who do only read lips and cannot hear. And now we're privileged right in this group right now. We can all hear, but if you read lips, you can't. Second issue of my concern. You know, I remember oral communication was always at the end of council meetings, and it was five minutes. Then we had the Margaret Hammond Rule, which oral communication was at the beginning for three minutes a person could speak. Now you've combined both oral communication and agenda items at the beginning. So when a person from the public wants to talk about either an agenda item or oral communication, they don't know, they either have three minutes, one minute, or two minutes. You, you've created a monster. I got three minutes this time, wow! But if those other four people came here and spoke, who chose not to come, or you cancel, whatever, would I only have maybe, like, one time, I think I only had two minutes. I think if you wanna have this separation between oral communication and agenda item, why don't you make a new rule? Think about it. First five people can speak on oral communication, three minutes, and the first five people can speak on agenda item. That way, people know that they have three minutes, not one minute or two minutes. How would you feel coming before the city council if you were a public and you wanted to speak on agenda? And all of a sudden, you had a prepared three-minute speech, and now you have to, all of a sudden, "Oh, all I have is one minute. I better change my thinking." Okay? Now, let's think about the lips. People do not, a lot of people do not, do not, cannot, uh, they can only read lips, and with the camera on my face, the public can see what I'm talking about, myself or anybody else. So let's think about bringing that camera back to the front like it used to be. For hundred, for many, many years, the camera was always on the face of the speaker. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Tony Passarella. Following Tony is Alan Dish and Carolyn Elvis.
Good evening, Council, Tony Passarella. I'm gonna flip the script. I pretty much destroyed any argument you might have about putting a fleet of e-scooters and e-bikes on Glendale uh streets and sidewalks. I wanna introduce you to this woman here. Let's call her Lady H. I met her twice. This is the first time. Um, obviously, she's a here, uh, a Siding paired woman, and this is in front of the Carousel Restaurant. She's zigzagging her way through there and hitting that umbrella stand right there, so I watched her go through there, um, and it wasn't pretty, her trying to navigate that. Then I met, met her a second time, and I talked to her, and she tells me that she called the city several times about problems on the sidewalk, whether it be uneven uh pavement or whether it be obstacles on the sidewalk, and she says the city never does a thing. Then I go on and she tells, then she goes on and tells me, "You know, I got a $196 ticket from a police officer." Whoa, a blind woman. Police officer discretion. I wasn't there, I have no idea what happened there, but white cane. Whoa, a blind woman. Police officer discretion. I wasn't there. I have no idea what happened there, but white cane. I'm thinking the driver should be, you know, watching out for that. So here are the obstructions in front of the Carousel Restaurant on Brandon Lexington. The city's obstructions. You're out of code, by the way, there. You're out of code, and I'll give you the code in a minute. Tree in the middle of the sidewalk, not in, not near the, the street, in the middle, not like a porto side. A light pole in the very middle of the sidewalk, two very large planters, blue trash can, bus bench with the canopy poles, two bike racks. Now here's Carousel's obstacles that this woman and other pedestrians have to navigate. Carousel, planter box, three large shade, no, heaters. It's in the summer. I don't know, I don't know why they're still up there. Three large umbrellas, there's one of them. Pandera has a collapsible sign. Poles, tables, chairs. I'm just wondering if it's the case, it's prophets before people. Anyway, if you want to fix it, maybe the staff, maybe somebody in the staff, because this, I'm passing out, maybe you got it already, examples of ADA. I don't want to go to the ADA. You're out of code. You all know you're out of code. Anyway, if somebody wants to come meet me, I'll tell you how we can fix it real easy.
Next is Alan Dish. Following Alan is, no, my apologies. Yeah, next is Alan Dish.
Thank you. Again, Clerk Kabajian, good evening, City Council. Could I speak to, through the mayor, to Ms. Alan Asatrian? I admire your proposal to use the funding for arts and culture. Maybe we can have also public pianos, which I know you've supported in the past, and I appreciate, basically, your support. And I saw you, if I can say, at the Greek Theater about two weeks ago. It was an honor, a privilege to attend that concert with so many people, and that you were also there. So I also want to address, yes, through the mayor, to Mr. Kasakian. I wished you very good health, and I admire that you're doing, again, these coffee hours with the people, which is very nice for civic, civil society. Through the mayor, to Mr. Bratman and Mr. Garpedian. I want to thank both of you for your very brave presence at the Royal Canyon Property Owners Association. I think it was very brave, especially Mr. Bratman, your, the way you addressed the issue kind of openly, to have, in a blunt way, that the city needs revenue, and maybe the properties can be redeveloped. Although, I have a solution, a different one maybe, which is, I think instead of rezoning, maybe, we should, or the city should rediscover large-scale housing projects. I know that sounds maybe problematic, but I think it's a very, the only solution. Instead of developing in fire zone-prone and flood-risk Verdugo Canyon, to have it near the mass transit that we have in the south. So my final point, yes, Mr. Najarian, through the mayor now to you, that you attended or visited Armenia. It's very nice. Of course, I had mentioned a week prior that we should have more support, coordination. So did my comments have any influence? No, I won't say that. But I think it's very nice that we have this opportunity. One more point to address the previous two speakers, that oral communication is so nice. Even Ms. Margaret Hammond, okay, it can be abused, used, but like, oral communication, this phenomenon of ordinary people airing their grievances, you know, it's like, it makes you feel better even if nothing changes. So that's what's also crucial. Although it's a problem sometimes, too. If you just speak and nothing changes, you know what I mean? Like, it's an issue if you become too comfortable up here. I have become too comfortable, maybe, so I will go back to my seat. Thank you. But I sincerely admire, I have five more seconds, and if I may just say what an honor it is to be here with you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Carolyn Elvis, and following Carolyn is Herbert Mulano and Vanine Shahmariyan.
Hi, good evening. My name's Carolyn Elvis, and I have been a resident of Glendale since 1998. My husband and I have lived at our home at 600 Ivy Street since 2002. I have a deep history of service to this community, including as an employee of the Glendale Unified School District and as a city librarian. I also served as the Edison Elementary PTA President, the Toll Middle School Foundation historian, and led a local Girl Scout troop for eight years. I am, simply put, deeply invested in our city's well-being. The street we have lived on for 23 years, Ivy Street, has persistent and growing parking challenges. Because it is a narrow street, parking is restricted to the north side only, a limitation that fails to account for the high-density population of our street. In 2016, to alleviate our family's contribution to congestion, my husband and I replaced our broken driveway with lovely brick pavers with an additional parking pad. We have two children, and knew it was only a matter of time before there were two more cars in the mix. We relied on a reputable company to ensure the work met all codes, including the requirement for green space, which is at least 45% of the front yard. Other neighbors had already had similar parking pads installed, and we had observed that these additional mildly, these additions mildly alleviated the street-wide parking problem. We did this nine years ago. But just this last week, my husband and I received a letter from the city citing our parking pad as a violation. Curiously enough, we were not the only household to receive this violation. Of the 10 houses who have built parking pads on our street, we are aware of six more that received the same citation in the past week. The city inspector informed us that we must either remove the pad or pay a $5,000 permit application fee with no guarantee of approval and no refund if denied. This significant cost would present a substantial financial hardship for our family and others. I urge the city council to look into this matter for several critical reasons. First, if the city forces the removal of these parking pads, the existing already severe parking challenges on Ivy Street will be significantly and negatively impacted for all residents, not just those who are cited. Second, the city continues to approve ADUs on our street, which increases the demand for parking and further exacerbates the problem. And lastly, it is unrealistic and counterproductive for the city, sorry, to penalize homeowners who proactively invested in their own money to create off-street parking, which was done to better the neighborhood and to reduce street congestion. We, as a unified group of neighbors, are asking the city council to review this specific enforcement action and consider a reasonable resolution that acknowledges the historical parking context of our street and the proactive steps homeowners have already taken. We look forward to a solution that prevents an unnecessary loss of parking spaces and avoids an even greater parking crisis on Ivy Street. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Herbert Mulano. Following Herbert is Vanine Shahmariyan and Lisa Kusak.
Mayor Najarian, members of the city council, my name is Herbert Mulano. I'm here to argue for the following procedure, that Measure A, which was passed by the voters last year in March, be submitted for reconsideration by the Charter Review Committee. And the reason why I feel this is so important is because it removed a policy embedded into the city charter to protect the finances of the city of Glendale through the proper use of request for proposal, in which the lowest qualified bidder would be selected. With this particular charter amendment that you, the five council members approved, you actually removed some significant protections to the public. Whereas before, the charter-level rules required competitive process, deviations were rare and documented. But now, no independent oversight, all oversight depends on the council's own ordinances and your own discretion. So this is self-policing, no structural chain on abuse. And it is that point, the possibility of abuse, maybe not yours, maybe some other council in the future. The arguments were that if you passed it, we were removing outdated procurement rules. It would be more flexible in constructing authority, streamline construction improvements, and the last one, ensure taxpayer funds are used more efficiently. And that last one is a complete lie. It doesn't do that, and yet there were no arguments against it. So I asked myself, why wasn't anyone, any organization, any procurement professional organization, not invited to give arguments against it? Any one of them would have done it. Throughout California, the norm is to have RFPs, not to have it bypassed by this. One-third of the votes, of the voters of Glendale saw through it. But given the fact and how it was presented without any arguments, many voters thought it was probably a non-issue, that they just could simply trust you, and that this would be, simply go forward, and you will have better procedures in the future. I argue that this is such a serious change in the city charter that the Charter Review Committee should take it up. I believe that we should rescind it, because it's an extremely dangerous precedent for us to continue in that direction. The manner in which it was presented to the public was false and misleading, and that, in my mind, is outrageous. It should never have happened. So I strongly suggest for the city council to do the right thing. We want good governance, and we want the appearance of good governance. Rescinding Measure A, that was passed last year, should be addressed by the Charter Review Committee.
Next is Vanine Shahmariyan. Following Vanine is Lisa Kusak and Edmond Hagopian.
All right. Good evening, Major Najarian and council members. Thank you for granting me the opportunity to speak with you today. My name is Vanine Shahmariyan, and I am the parent of two autistic boys, ages six and seven. I am joined this evening by Lisa, Lisa Barzekian, Elsie Ventoria, and Mariam Gukasian, who are also parents of children with special needs. We are here to respectfully request that the city consider installing fully enclosed, gated fences around all local playgrounds for children like my son, who may not fully recognize or understand danger. The presence of secure fencing can be the difference between a safe recreational experience and a potentially life-threatening situation. Research shows that approximately 1 in 36 children in the United States is diagnosed with autism. One of the most significant safety concerns for children on the spectrum is wandering or elopement. In fact, studies indicate that nearly half of the children with autism attempt to wander from safe environments, often placing them at risk of injury. For families like mine, ours, a fenced, a fenced playground is not a convenience, it's a necessity. Specifically, we ask that these gates be built tall enough to prevent climbing, and equipment with secure latch doors to ensure that children remain safely inside the designated play areas. These safeguards would provide families with the peace of mind necessary to fully participate in our community's public spaces. In addition, we ask that inclusive signage be installed at playgrounds, reminding visitors that children of all abilities use these facilities. Such reminders promote patience, respect, and understanding, values that strengthen the sense of community for everyone. While we deeply appreciate the existence of the inclusive playgrounds, such as the one on Maple, we, they are not truly accessible for families like mine, ours, unless they are also fully fenced and secure. At present, I drive my children to only gated playgrounds I am aware of in Studio City in order for them to play safely. Families in Glendale should not have to leave their own neighborhoods to access something as fundamental as a safe playground. By investing in a secure, inclusive play space, the city will not only be protecting its vulnerable, most vulnerable, children, but will also be sending a clear, powerful message that every child in Glendale is valued equally. Thank you very much for your time. thoughtful consideration.
Can I ask a quick question? The park that you, you go to in Studio City, can you give us the address? And is it fully fenced, and it's a tall fence, and it has a gate that closes?
I don't know the address, but it's called Moore Park, Studio City. I think it's in the corner of Burbank and Laurel Canyon, somewhere along the way. They have two doors, and they have latches, so in order for them to actually get out, they have to open up the latch. And so usually, I kind of hang out around that area. And so, and their fences are not that high, but, I mean, and they have dips, but it's just an example. But I, you know, I'm still very cautious when I'm there, but that's the only place I could take, take my kids once in a while to play. And autistic kids need the time to be outdoors, just like any other child. And so we don't get outside playtime a lot. So we do a lot of indoor playgrounds, but those cost money. And, you know, they're not available like parks are, so.
Thank you.
So you're familiar, I'm sure, as a parent, as I know, when I had a kid, I became very familiar with all the parks in Glendale. We do have some with fences. Are none of them adequate?
No, because even a small gap, children like my, my seven-year-old will escape. So we need fully enclosed, so that even though there's, you know, the playground, they want to wander. Their thing is always to get away from everyone. And in one split second, he can be from here to down the street. He's very fast, and he's not the only one. So they, they will find ways. So that's why we need, like, fully enclosed spaces.
I will say that I, I've always found some value and there's some comfort when there is a playground, Nibbly Park has a short fence, car, as well as Palmer was mentioned. Certainly, those give parents some peace of mind. When my child was very young and we would have playdates. But I'll have to learn more about what impacts would be of having a fully enclosed one. So I would also welcome knowing which parks do have that.
And also, the, when we're talking about enclosed, we want it to be around the playground and not the whole park. So, because like Maple Park, we have fences around the entire park, but we really are focusing more on, like, the playground areas so they can play there. And I met with Parks and Recreation Director, Onik.
Any examples you can give us from, whether it's in California or elsewhere, I, I will find helpful. Thank you.
I mean, we don't go to too many parks in Glendale because of that situation. So the only example I have that I take my children are Moore Park. Their, their fences are a little dipped, so we don't even want that, want it to be straight, because the dips are very low, and they can climb over that. But that's the best I could find to take my children to.
Thank you.
I'm just gonna briefly say thank you for coming. And I do think that there's something to, we are gonna have this discussion next week to be able to adjournize the item. But I think, you know, I come from a place of not knowing, because we don't experience it. So whatever input you have beyond just the fence or whatnot, we would appreciate you providing that to Mr. Bolonikin, so he's also aware, along with any of the park staff. So whether it is the height, whatever makes it.
Yeah, and I had the meeting with the Director of Parks and Recreation, and so I have given them some things that would help.
We're gonna talk about it next week, and hopefully we can get those adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
The next public speaker is Lisa Kusak. Following Lisa is Edmond Hagopian and Joel Hanyan.
Good evening. The last time the city council met, I spoke on why I do not think the dedicated BRT bus lanes are right for the city of Glendale. To briefly review my major concerns, the dedicated lanes take away an entire lane of traffic in some of the city's busiest roads. They take away over 100 parking spaces in commercial areas, and they take away left-hand turn lanes, resulting in cars having to turn in or out of the lanes or having to reroute down residential streets. But tonight, I would like to focus on dedicated BRT lanes triggering the state-mandated SB 79. So, SB 79, I, there it is. Okay, so this is the most accurate map I've been able to find of what the rezoning of SB 79 will look like in the city of Glendale. Basically, any property within those half-mile circles would be rezoned for the construction of six-to-nine-story apartments with no parking requirements. So along just the Glen Oaks route, that represents roughly 7,500 family homes that could be taken off the market, demolished, and turned into rental high-rise apartment complexes. Now, I appreciate the city council's writing a letter of opposition to SB 79. So I know that the council doesn't want this radical rezoning. However, unfortunately, the bill has passed both chambers and is currently sitting on the governor's desk. And it will likely pass, which means that if it does, there's only one way for the city council to stop this, and that is to say no to the dedicated bus lanes and ask Metro to please reroute the lanes onto the freeway or change the dedicated lanes to mixed flow. Now, we know that this can be done, because several other cities and neighborhoods, specifically Pasadena and Eagle Rock, have said no to the dedicated lanes. And in fact, as Councilmember Garpetian pointed out on the BRT wrote from North Hollywood to Pasadena, most of the cities have some to no dedicated bus lanes, and Glendale is the only city that has allowed Metro to use around 98% of its route to be dedicated. the only city that has allowed Metro to use around 98% of its route to be dedicated bus lanes. These BRT lanes might have been something that the city could afford to experiment with, were it not for the dire rezoning consequences of SB-79, that will take some of Glendale's most desirable neighborhoods and rezone them into the Wild West of apartment construction. I would ask that the city council agendize this, so that the, that the residents can understand the full ramifications of these bus lanes triggering SB-79, and so that we can have a vote on whether to keep the dedicated lanes or change to mixed flow. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Edmond Hagopian. Following Edmond is Joel Hanyan and Paul Karapetian.
Good evening, again. My name is Edmond Hagopian. I think we can all agree that the biggest problem that we have in the city is the budget. And since we have passed the budget with the mitigation strategies, there hasn't been any conversation on the budget again. And we can clearly see the land-use element was used as an opportunity to raise some funds to plug a hole in the future budget. If this is such a huge problem for all of us, how come we, we have not seen any, we have not seen it as an agenda item? How come we don't have any reports showing what are the opportunities for cutting costs or generating revenues, with actual numbers next to it, with different scenarios, different scales? The land-use element, we went through this exercise, and if you haven't seen, first of all, thank you for all the organizers and the city staff for organizing those meetings and answering questions of the public, and also council members attending those meetings and answering questions. I think what we should learn from these meetings is, we need the trust of the entire city, and the, the way this was pushed forward, it actually eroded trust, and some of the incendiary comments from certain individuals created even a bigger problem. So please, agendize the cost revenue, cost reduction and revenue generation, and ask the staff to create a report for it, or create a committee. This is, I believe, the fourth time I've, I've, I've come here and asked for a committee for it. This, this way, every community member could bring their ideas and share them at the committee, so that we are putting this forward on behalf of the entire residents, not just individuals. Also, I wanted to speak on the Charter Review Committee. I know you're going to speak to it at the next meeting. I'm very concerned the way Chair Flower is running the meeting, and the way Mr. Garcia is not honing in Mr. Flower. They are not following Robert rules of orders. For example, the committee members are, clearly have not received any training, and they, they are hesitant to offer amendments. I spoke to two committee members, that they actually wanted to vote on increasing the salaries for the council members, and they got confused during the commotion, and they could not, they did not vote on it. I was surprised, and they confirmed that. Also, Chair Flower did not allow a, a committee member to remove a, an agenda item from the agenda, and Mr. Garcia is just sitting there allowing this to happen. Thank you.
Next is Joel Hanyan. Following Joel is Paul Karapetian.
Hello, everybody. Despite my appearance, my name is not Ohanian, but Ohannlin, but we'll forgive you for that. So this is basically a little lighthearted, but serious tip of the hat to an unsung hero, Bradley Calvert. So I know he's probably not here tonight, but I'll, I'll continue. As many of you know, civil service can sometimes feel like a dubious honor. In the current political climate, there seems to be no safe harbor where you can do or say what you think is right, without risking some form of public vitriol. I'm sure you've all experienced that. If you tried to solve world hunger, there would be some sort of opposition, no matter what you do. So, but despite this, Mr. Calvert conducted himself with honor and integrity, as he reshaped and managed the former Community Development Department, now known as the Community and Neighborhood Development Department. In our particular case, my wife and I, the code-compliance portion of neighborhood services was called upon to have our neighbors' non-compliant fence removed, or somehow legalized. The owners paid no heed to the multiple warnings, and they abused the extensions that were granted to them over a one-year period, since the time when we reported this illegal fence. We were frustrated and dismayed at the apparent lack of enforcement. However, Mr. Calvert and his team listened to us with empathy and patience, advising that these violations are not brushed under the carpet, there is a process that they need to follow. So we are happy to say the process worked. This is a good news story. The fence nightmare is over. We credit Bradley Calvert's team with keeping their word while dealing with people who do not respect rules. Thanks also to Tamar Assad and Anahid Avakelian, who, who work with, with him. And as for the rest of what Bradley Calvert does, the turmoil surrounding city public parking spaces and housing needs that Mr. Calvert finds himself embroiled in, I'm going to remind him and everybody else of this ancient Latin expression, which I will not translate, illegitimi non caperundum. For those of you who know what that means, you'll get my point. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you. Our last public comment is by Paul Karapetian.
City Council, thank you for your time this evening. As one of the organizers of the community event on the 20th, I'm a member of the RCPOA, Royal Canyon Property and Order Association Board. It was a joint event with our board and the Rossmoyn homeowners, and it, it was a very eventful event, and we had about 200 people there. I wanted to bring up a couple of things that came out of that. First, as many of the speakers have pointed out, and Mr. Brockman, I'm glad to hear you're on the mend, I, I do commend you for, for getting up there and answering the tough question. We got to see visibility, and frankly, we got to see candor in terms of the need for revenue, and, and how that is impacting the desire to eventually develop these lots. So, thank you for that. And Mayor Proten Garpetian was there, and he also gave us a rundown of how the city is doing relative to the BRT and to this item. So, when we, when we discussed this, the land-use element, we had two, two points. First, that we believed the CORO had to be eliminated, it was unnecessary, particularly the lots in Montrose, those should stay parking, the businesses need them, and, and any mention of, of changing them is, is something we don't support. And then our lots, the ones along Verdugo, those are currently zoned as special recreation. They are, they are intended for open space for public and private use. So any development there, other, is, is something that we don't support. We had 200 people there, we distributed about 500 lawn signs, we've received about 4,000 people signing our joint petitions between these two efforts. So it's an overwhelming support of removing this thing. Furthermore, we wanted to make sure that the, that the parking lots get removed from the surplus land use SLA designation. It's very clear that the, there are two steps towards eventual disposition, which leads to development of these properties, either through a lease or, or through a sale. And that is, one, the CORO, and that is, and secondly, the designation is surplus. So those need to be unwound. We did receive word subsequently that, that, that there is a plan to remove them from the CORO. We'd like to get that confirmed. We also learned that the ENA for the Civic Auditorium has been terminated. We'd ask that we become a, a party to a committee, the Rossmoyn and the Royal Canyon Homeowner Association, to determine what's going to happen with the RFP, with the Civic Auditorium, so that we can be partners in figuring out what to do with that very important asset, historic asset in the city. So we'd like to understand what's going on and be part of the RFP process and the eventual decision-making. Thank you.
Mr. Galan, I have a question. Were there any minutes taken at this meeting referred to?
Mayor Najarian, it wasn't, as, as you know, this wasn't a city-led or sanctioned community meeting. It was organized by the two HOAs. But I do believe Mr. Calvert and his staff took notes as it, as it relates to the land use comments or questions, as it relates to the land use element.
There is a video that we've prepared, and we'll, we'll make it available.
Yeah, I mean, I would like to see it. I've, I've heard it described as, everything from a town hall, to a campaign event, to a pep rally, to an ambush. I'm surprised that the BRT was discussed. I don't know what was, what was said to the residents to urge them to contact council. I think that would be an attempt to influence council to take a position on that. So, as Mr. Garcia indicated, there may be some conflict issues. So I'd like to see who said what, what was said, if that is the truth or not the truth, because, you know, there may be some issues.
Mayor Najarian, I, I was present at that meeting.
You were there too?
I was present, yes.
Sounds like a, sounds like a city council meeting.
And, and I, I could put together some notes, based on my recollection of the comments and statements that were made during that meeting.
Okay, I, I would like that.
I mean, I, I wasn't aware of it, I found out about it after, but I've been getting a lot of calls from individuals and residents that were at that meeting, asking for clarification based on comments that were made there, that were conflicting comments from some council members versus others, and then staff, and then, and so I have nothing to, like, go off of, based on.
Again, Councilmember Satrian, it wasn't a sponsored meeting by the city at all. The Rossmoyn or Royal Canyon HOA board had sent invitation to, I believe, all the council members. Initially, I had heard that Councilmember Garpetian and Brockman were attending, but then when I went back and checked emails, and I think they resent the invite to all the council members.
I'm going to check my emails again, there's like thousands of them on there, but I haven't, I didn't see anything on my calendar, and.
Yes, again, we, we didn't put on anybody's, any, any council member's calendar, because we didn't want to violate the Brown Act to start with, and it wasn't a city-sponsored or, or initiated community meeting.
Yeah, okay. Mr. Garpetian?
Yes, as you all know, I was at that meeting, and this, this meeting was organized by both associations, Royal Canyon and Rossmoyn, based on the meetings that they had, prior meetings that they had with staff, and they wanted to let their membership know what's going on. And there was no influence on doing anything other than providing information, it was televised, you can, you can watch it if you want to, staff was there, and they presented like any other meeting that they had with, like, like, I don't know, Montrose Shopping Park Association, and they provided information on land use element, SLA, CORO, everything. It was the same kind of a meeting, but more people were there, and they were, they voiced their opinion, you wanted to know how the community feels about issues, that's, that's what they voiced their opinion on. And that's about it. It's not that all this conspiracy theory is, it wasn't open, open to public information. You shouldn't, you didn't have to be there as a council member, you should, you could have just attended as a, as a community member. It wasn't a Brown Act violation in there, and again, the staff was there, the city manager was there, Mr. Calvert was there with his team, and he answered questions.
But he not have been a Brown Act violation?
But, but you spoke.
Yeah, I was invited as a.
But you're speaking about the BRT urging the residents, first of all, you carry with you the gravitas of a council member. And some of the information that I'm hearing from the public is wrong about the BRT. I'm not sure you know the whole story, but I don't think, I mean, I would, I would caution my colleagues from getting up and speaking and asserting facts that are being dealt with from another agency, with the intent, clearly, the intent is for them to contact us, as we're hearing today, urging a particular, in my concern, it's mainly the BRT. We do have, in my opinion, some conflict issues, and there's some misinformation going out, so.
Well, I.
Mr. Mayor?
Just a concern.
Sorry, we're, we're now having a discussion about a meeting that.
No, let me, let me just, let me just say this, as far as, as far as.
Still a discussion, I mean.
As far as BRT goes, I was very brief, I did not ask anyone to counsel the, call the council members or approach anyone. And as far as the conflict goes, you're more than welcome to contact any agency that you like, FPPC, and find out if there's a conflict. Also, I believe you have a conflict as well, because if the conflict is based on me having an office on, on, on the route, you do have a conflict of interest as well, and you had that conflict for, for over a decade, when your office was on, on Central Avenue, and you promoted and pushed this project forward, and you were sitting on the border of the, the metro. If you want to talk about conflict, let's, let's be honest and talk about every.
Learn the law, Mr. Garpetian, then we can discuss.
I don't want to have a discussion on this item, but I do want to clarify. One statement was that it would have been a conflict of the Brown Act for a majority of the council to be there, which was my understanding, and always has been. Whenever there's an issue being discussed that we may make a decision on in chambers, we cannot have a majority of the council there, because it could possibly constitute a meeting. And then there was a comment made that it wouldn't have been a Brown, violation of the Brown Act to attend. So which is it? I would like to know.
Sure. Councilmember Kusakian, members of the council. So there's an exception in the Brown Act that allows a majority of the members to be at a community event, when that community event is not, not organized by this, by the municipal organization, by the, by the public agency. In this case, this event was not organized by the city, so majority council.
Even though there was an official city presentation at it.
Well, that's correct. I think if, if, if staff was asked to be there and make a presentation, as long as they're not organized, involved in the organization, organization of the meeting, I think the exception would apply.
Good to know.
I, well, I would, I think we need further clarification on that, because I actually remember last year, at the same hall, there was a meeting on public safety, and we, I think all of us were present at that meeting, and we were told by staff that we cannot make comments, and we had our city manager be the one to make comments.
Told by someone from my office?
It was literally at the event.
Again, I, that's first I'm hearing about it, so.
Let's get clarification on that, because it really matters. I'm sure there are people who would like to attend these events from the public or not, or from the council. Thank you, that's all.
And also, we kept asking people to participate and voice their opinions, and now they're voicing their opinions, because we don't like the, the opinion, we're trying to, you know, that's, I think that's.
That's not, that's not my issue, I have never said that, nor have I criticized it. All right, let's just.
Putting to you. And, and lastly, your comments are well-taken, Mr. Garpetian. Mr. Garcia, I'd like you to request a ruling from the FPPC, whether there's a conflict for myself at any time, as well as Mr. Garpetian, on this particular issue. I'll give you the details that would involve the ownership or the interest in real estate.
Will do.
Okay, let's move on.
Next is Item 8, Adoption of Ordinances. Item 8, City Attorney Regarding Ordinance Amending Glendale Municipal Code Provisions Regarding Meetings, Powers, and Duties of the Commission on the Status of Women. One, Adoption of Ordinance Amending Section 2.38.090 and 2.38.140 of the Glendale Municipal Code 1995 relating to the Commission on the Status of Women.
Mr. Galan?
Yes, thank you. Mayor Najarian, members of the city council, on March 18th of 2025, council recommended certain changes to the frequency of meetings of the Commission on the Status of Women and their powers and duties. And on September 9th, the ordinance was introduced with certain amendments that council had requested. Tonight's recommendation is to adopt that said ordinance that's attached to the staff report.
Thank you, we have three.
That was.
Correct.
The version, okay.
The amended version.
The amended version, correct.
We have several speakers. Madam Clerk, if you could call them?
Yes, our first speaker is Mike Mohill. Following Mike is Beth Brooks and Diane Lemelot.
I thought you were leaving, Mr. Mohill.
Evening, council members. My name is Mike Mohill. I love women. I love them all, all sizes and shapes. But you know, the city of Glendale does not have any money. We do not, you've got. We do not, if you're going to have a commission, beautiful. We talked about recently about having a paid member running this commission. Let it be a volunteer, first of all. Second of all, we talked about having a men's commission. Men are suffering just as much as women. You know, Beth Brooks mentioned on Next Door that in the United States, women don't suffer. They ought to go to Afghanistan and the Middle East. That's when you, that's what you call suffering. It's just an incom, you know, it's all, it's all relative, isn't it? But you know, this is not the 1930s, 40s, or 50s, or the 60s. Women are very prosperous in this city, especially as Mr. Garpetti has mentioned in the past. Our focus should be on a man's commission. We also need to have an old man's commission. I'm 83, I need support too, and I'll be the president of that organization. We need a Jewish commission. We need, uh, an Armenian commission, a gay commission. We need a commission on, on everything. The thing, funny thing about it is there are many organizations outside of Glendale that take care of these problems. And you all know that. So why are we spending city resources for the women's commission when they occupy this room? That's lights the taxpayers are paying for. Women, I love them all. I'll date them all, in fact, if you let me. I'm ready. But women, you've made it. What is your problem? Why do you come, why are you a victim? Why do you always play the victimhood? You have jobs that men cannot even get a job today because you're taking their places. And you expect the man still, old school, to be the head of the household, and they should be making most of the money. But nowadays, that's not happening. Women are making more money than their husbands and boyfriends. It's a serious issue. We should put men at the top. Because you know what? You expect more from them. Thank you.
Next is Beth Brooks.
Yeah, I, I do believe that, uh, you know, two things can be true at the same time. I do believe that real suffering is happening for women in the Middle East. I think that is actual suffering. Women are being, you know, executed for not wearing hijab in Iran. I think that's a serious thing. It doesn't mean that there aren't, uh, issues of domestic violence and things like that. Two things can be true at the same time. Women can be doing well, but that doesn't mean that every woman is doing well. But I'm not going to talk about that you're going to have a commission or not, because I know that's a done deal. You're going to have a commission. I'm only going to talk about the, the portion of the ordinance that lifted from the Sustainability Commission that embedding the women's commission in the, basically, the operations of the, of city departments. So the, the, the phrasing is work in conjunction with city departments regarding the development, implementation, and evaluation of programs impacting women and girls, including receiving and providing input, reviewing programs from departments, and participating in working groups. Now, that was included in the Sustainability Commission, not in any other commission. That's, that's nowhere in any other commission in the, in your municipal ordinances. And that's really because there is a, a, a technical, more municipal operations that the Sustainability Commission is involved in, and the Women's Commission is much more advisory. I believe you should take that out of the ordinance. I think that you are embedding them in administrative, uh, functions and decisions that should rightly go to the city manager, uh, that should not be a part of this commission at all. I think you're extending the same language to a women's commission. You're allowing them to leverage, uh, uh, staff and programs. You're allowing them to embed themselves in city operations. The Sustainable Comi, the Sustainability Commission, uh, has authority to coordinate with departments fits its operational technical mission. A women's commission does not. It's advisory to the council. I don't think it should be, would you want the Women's Commission to review HR programs, uh, police initiatives, housing programs? You're moving beyond the advisory, uh, uh, responsibilities of this commission into something that's more administrative involvement, and I don't think that's, that belongs there. I understand it's unusual with the Sustainability Commission, but I think that that's necessary. I think you're really opening up a can of worms here, and I think that this doesn't fit with what the mission of the commission should be. It should be advisory, it should not be administrative. Thank you.
Our final public comment is by Diane Lamblot.
Uh, mayor and council members, I'm Diane Lamblot, immediate past chair of the Commission on the Status of Women. This is the third time since March of this year that I've addressed you regarding the various specifics of this ordinance, so I will keep my comments brief. This ordinance is not only about empowering the Commission on the Status of Women to better advocate on issues affecting women and girls in Glendale, but also about treating the Commission on the Status of Women in a balanced and fair way that is consistent with other commissions. Holding meetings only four times a year is just not viable for the commission to perform any sort of ongoing or regular programming or functions. A monthly schedule would ensure that the commission is a constantly active and effective body, able to quickly respond to current needs and fully carry out its mission of improving the lives of women and girls in Glendale. Additionally, during these past months, you have also heard from many members of the community in both public comments and in emails who have urged you to adopt the revised ordinance. In sum, the ordinance before you tonight is clear, consistent, and responsive to council's direction, and will hopefully be supported unanimously by council. If so, it will demonstrate that council is listening to the community, and that it recognizes the essential role that the commission does, and more importantly, can play in supporting and empowering its women and girls. Finally, I'd like to acknowledge that we would not be here tonight without the persistence, advocacy, and support of Councilmember Satrian, who recognizes that the commission is essential to achieving parity and stability for Glendale women, which in turn strengthens their families and the entire community, and how much more it can accomplish if given the tools and opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
Uh, that is all for speakers.
Hey, we've had a lot of discussion on this. Is there anyone who would like to add anything?
I'm just going to clarify two points.
Yes.
Uh, just not leave things hanging. Mr. Mohill, um, today would have been my late grandmother's, um, birthday, and so I walked into this chamber wanting to channel her kindness, so I'm not going to respond to your derogatory response and comments today. Uh, to Ms. Brooks, um, I would note that I had addressed that during the last time this item came up, but as an example that I gave in the commission, working with the different departments, it would include, um, the commission being the point that, for example, when our police department is putting together their pamphlet, which I don't think that the police officers should be the ones putting together a mandated pamphlet for domestic violence, that the commission and the commission's work should be the one that disseminates the information that's needed for the pamphlet for the police department, or for example, to Ms. Isayan, who deals with, uh, responding to requests for domestic violence survivors. And so those are some of the ways in which, uh, the commission and the staff can work together, uh, with the different departments to help close gaps in serving our women and girls. I know we have a long, uh, agenda in front of us.
Would you like to move it?
I would love to move this item, um, and I hope that the commission members and the community, um, used the opportunities that are available to really look at programming and resources that uplift our women and girls. Um, and I have said this time and again, that, uh, when you are uplifting women and girls, uh, you are uplifting, uh, families, you're uplifting children, our local economy, and our society as a whole. So, and thank you to my colleagues.
I'll second the motion. Thank you. Roll call.
Councilmembers Asadrian.
Yes.
Brockman.
Yes.
Garpetian.
Yes.
Kazakian.
Yes.
Mayor Najarian.
Yes. Next item, please.
Next are action items. The first action item is Glendale Water Empower regarding amendment to electric rates ordinance to implement adjusted and redistributed electric rates. One, introduction of ordinance amending ordinance number 6025, establishing the electric rates for Glendale Water Empower for fiscal years 2024 to 2028 to implement adjusted and redistributed electric rates increases effective November 1st, 2025, uh, November 1st, uh, 2026, and November 1st, 2027.
Mr. Galanian.
Yes, uh, Mayor Najarian, members of city council. Uh, in order to mitigate the impact of the recently approved and scheduled, uh, electric rate increases, GWP staff, uh, made every effort to lessen the impacts of, uh, these changes, this rate increases, with the recommendation to defer and redistribute, uh, the rate increases effective November 1st, 2025. And on June 3rd of this year, the city council adopted a resolution approving GWP's deferral and redistribution plan. With that, I'm going to invite Adurnay Sayan, our Assistant General Manager, GWP, in charge of finance and risk management, to present a, a brief, uh, PowerPoint presentation with more details for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Galanian. Mayor, um, Najarian, members of council, I'm Adurnay Sayan, um, Assistant General Manager overseeing finance and risk for Glendale Water Empower. So today I'm here, um, to, uh, for the introduction of an ordinance to, uh, adjust and, or redistribute the, um, electric rates as Mr. Galanian mentioned. So as a way of background, oops, sorry. Um, the city council adopted the electric COSA in November of 2023, and although it was a five-year COSA, there were only three years with rate adjustments approved, the first one being 14.8% effective January 1st of 2024, um, the second one being 11.3% effective July 1 of 2024, and the final one, which was, um, to be implemented July 1st of 2025 of 11.3%. And of course, these are system average rates. On June 3rd, I came before you, um, to propose a deferral and the redistribution of these rates to November 1st, and, uh, having it set November 1st of each, a year, with the first, uh, being effective this November at 5%, um, the second one being, uh, November 1st of 2026 at 2.95%. And then the final one being November 1st of 2027, 2.95%. Again, system average rates, because at that time, uh, we didn't have enough time to, uh, for our consultant to co, uh, compute the customer class rates. But we did say we would come before you again, uh, before October 1st, to give you the customer class rates, which is what we're doing, um, tonight. Looking at the, um, rate adjustments by the, uh, class we distributed, it's overall, again, is 11.3%, but the breakdown is 6.1% for the first implementation, which is November 1st for residential, a 5.63 for small business, a 3.29 for medium business, 4.23 for large business. And again, um, each year is listed on this chart, as you can see, um, with the, with the point that the cumulative increase is the same as it was back in November of 2023. If no action is taken today, uh, the increases will default back to what was originally approved in November of 2023. So come November 1st, the increases will be overall system 11.3, 13.8 for the residential, 12.7 for small business, 7.4 for medium business, and 9.5 for large business, because this is what was a part of the COSA. So no action means you're defaulting back to what was previously approved. Looking ahead, so today we're here for the, um, the establishment of the rate, uh, redistribution, and next week, October 7th, we will be back for the adoption of the ordinance. And I want to note that the redistribution will be effective, uh, retroactive to November 1st, not November 7th, as a 30-day notice for the October 7th, um, adoption of the ordinance. Um, this concludes my presentation. We also have, um, Tony Georges from Nugent, the consultant who worked on our COSA, on the line. He has joined us remotely if you have any rate-specific questions. So that concludes my presentation. Oops.
Oh. So, any, any questions from staff?
Well, I, I would like to know. I appreciate the presentation. I understand, um, the approach and, and recommendation. But we are hearing a lot from the public about rates almost being doubled. There have been examples of exorbitant increases. So how, I mean, what you're presenting and what we're hearing from the public, there sometimes appears to be a disconnect. So I would like to know what you have done to research that, how you are handling the concerns, because I'm sure if they're calling us, they're also calling you, because we also convey the concerns we, we hear. What are those? Is it outliers? Is it, um, people that, uh, are perhaps, um, I mean, we heard from a gentleman here the other day that said that he had his rates miscalculated. What are you doing to assure that the rates are, um, accurate and that they are not crippling to our residents?
Thank you. Good evening, Scott Mellon, Glendale Water Empower General Manager. Um, I appreciate the question, uh, Councilwoman Kazakian. Uh, first, to the question about the, the, the estimates, you, you mentioned the metering issue. Very broadly, there are, there are many, uh, reasons why we might be doing estimates on meters. If we have bad communications, we have things like that going on, you would do estimates and eventually go out and do replacement. We have a very active program right now, going out and trying to replace the meters that are, uh, faulty. And as part of that, when we install a new meter, we go back and review the estimated period, and if corrections need to be made, uh, then we do give rebates or, uh, reimbursements. Uh, if it turns out that, um, they've underpaid, we don't necessarily go back and ask for additional funds. So, uh, that, we have a natural progress or process that we go through to, to deal with those particular scenarios. Um, to address the conversation about doubling, um, there is a correlation between how often you use your energy and how much it costs. Uh, if, if you're using more energy with the new rates, then you're going to be paying additional cost.
Naturally.
I think there may be some overall exaggerations, but I won't say that there aren't people that do experience, uh, increases that are much higher than they've, uh, would have expected. When we look at comparisons to other cities, first off, it's, there's a fair amount of complexity involved in trying to go apples-to-apples comparisons with other utilities. Uh, there's a general structure to how rates are performed between utilities, but each utility, especially municipal utilities, have kind of their own way of applying rates. So it's not uncommon that when you look at just the base percentages, it does look extreme. I will say from the standpoint of Glendale, uh, when we look at other utilities like Burbank or Pasadena or Banning or, um, any utility a comparably size to Glendale and in the municipal world, we are, we are higher than they are. We are also doing a great deal more than they are. We are building utility infrastructure. If you're going to build utility, utility infrastructure and you're trying to catch up to want to do more things with this, uh, with our grid, um, it's going to cost. So, and I'm being point-blank with council that, yes, it is likely that our rates are higher than other neighboring utilities, only for now. Uh, we know that, by Burbank, for instance, they have done, uh, two additional rate increases over two years. They've just got those approved. Pasadena is looking at doing the same thing, uh, where those are on the order of 9% to 10% a year. Uh, we also know Banning, as example, I think they just got approved, uh, to 13, I believe it's 13.4% increases for both years. This is the world we're living in. And I, I don't mean to be unsympathetic in what I'm saying. I am, I am saying exactly what we're going through. The reason why the rates are the way they are is because we are paying for building out utility infrastructure. We're paying for Grayson, we're paying for Shoal, we're paying for solar installations inside the city. We're also paying for catching up with all the, uh, maintenance and improvements that are required in this grid, uh, that really didn't get, uh, taken care of over the past 10, 15 years. So while that's aggressive, it's reality. So I, I appreciate the question. Hopefully that answers it.
It's part of an answer, but I think, you know, the, the question is going to continue to come up when residents bring to us their actual utility bills and show us increases that are far in excess of what we were told was going to happen here in the chambers. And that is my concern. I want us to have a plan in place and be prepared to answer those residents' questions, address their concerns, and find out why, especially those who are most, who are struggling the most, folks who are on fixed incomes. I know that we've talked about programs that we can allocate and assign funds to, to help them out, but, you know, this is going to be a very difficult lift for all of us to approve when we have residents telling us how the cost of everyday items in life is continuously increasing. Some of it is out of our control. This is one of those things that, yes, it is in our control. Obviously, we have to also keep the lights on. And we're trusting you to tell us that this is something that has to be done. And if it's going to be done, it has to be done accurately. I, I heard the first part of your question about sometimes a meter under counts, sometimes a meter over counts. I have to tell you, that doesn't give me much confidence as a resident, as a council member, as a taxpayer, as I'm hearing that. We got to figure out what's going on with the meters. So we are capturing the actual amount that's being used and charging people the fair amount.
If you don't mind, I'd like to clarify that last point that you made. I, I did not say that it's over counts or under counts. What I was referring to is if we have meters that are faulty, are not collecting information, not providing it back to the system, because we are an AMI system, so we, we collect signals from the meters for those that are not communicating. And we have to run estimates. Then we do go back, we will replace those meters, and then we'll look at common profile for the individual at that residence, and look in the past how they perform compared to what we were running as estimates, and we can make corrections.
Fair enough. So my question would be, what are we planning for to ensure quality assurance with meters that we install in people's homes?
Well, the primary thing is to replace bad meters as fast as we can. One of the things we did when we moved into an AMI structure is we removed most of the personnel who would normally do that, because we are collecting information remotely. So what we've done is we have a low-level number of staff that can do meter replacements. They work through our customer service group. We also have a fair amount of meter infrastructure at our electrical ser, our electrical services group. They do troubleshooting. So if it's something that we can quickly identify and it's just to replace, we go out, replace it quickly, and we get them back on track. If it's something that requires troubleshooting, we actually spend more time to figure out what the cause of the problem was at, at our customer base. So we, it is part of our infrastructure to actually address these problems as fast as we can. That's all. Thanks.
Carpetian?
Yes, thank you. This electric COSA was adopted in November 2023, right?
Yes.
Was there an increase in, in December or November of 2023?
It was in January 2024 when the first rate increase was implemented.
Okay, so in January was 14.8%, then in July of 2024 was 11.3%.
Yes, sir.
Then July of 2025, it was supposed to be 11.3%.
Yes.
Then we decided to change the formula and go in different increments. So total is about 37.5% increase from July of 20, January of 2024 until July of 2025, if that 11% would have taken, you know, place. So when people say our rates are doubled, it's almost there, because cumulatively, it's over 50% by the end of 2025. So they're not wrong by saying our, our rates are almost double. They may use the same amount of electricity, a little bit higher or less. Maybe they bought a new, I don't know, electric car and that jacked up their, their, their usage. But overall, it was 37.4% increase. And if you increase 14.8% in January of 2024, and then when you're increasing another 11%, it's what it was before, plus that 14%, plus that 11%. So cumulative, it's, it's, it's a lot more than 37.4%. So that's, that's, that's what I wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Brotman?
Yeah, I want to follow up on a couple of things. So what is the cumulative number, then?
I'd have to look at it. The, I think we had it on here.
The cumulative increase is about 43.6%.
43.6. Okay. So that's a lot, but it's not a doubling. Forty, it's not 100%, it's forty, it's, it's 43.6.
It's not 50%, it's 43%.
Well, no, it's not doubling means 100%. It's not doubling. It's, it's 43.6%. Let's, let's not, you know, let's not throw these things out there that, that are untrue. It's not, it's, it's nowhere close to doubling. Now, Mr. Mellon, you came from, you came to us from Burbank, so you, you know their system pretty well. Now, I understand they've also been going through some rate increases.
Yes, they have.
Facing, I guess, some of the same issues we are, although their system is very different. Could you maybe just touch on, like, what they've been going through, where they are, and maybe why there, why there's some remaining differences?
Sure.
If you can do that simply. I know this stuff is very complicated, but I'm hoping you can put it in, in layman's language that we can all understand.
I'll try, I'll try and keep this simple. It's, there's many facets to this, but so, city of Burbank basically has a breakdown between residential and customer slash industrial customers as at, it's like 80 to 20. I'm, I'm just going to keep the number simple. It's about 80% residential, 20%, and that's from a meter count, meter count alone. Burbank's meter count is pretty close to the same, residential to commercial. Big difference for us is we're about, on the residential side, the volume and then associative costs in residential is about 45%. It's what we see revenue from residential. For Burbank, residential revenue is about 20%. It's the inverse. So 80% in Burbank of the, of the meters account for 20% of the income. They get more income from their commercial and industrial customers than we do. When we're looking at how to balance out equity per Proposition 26 and how billing is performed, you have to look at who the users of the system are. And your rates are based that way. For Glendale, it's close to 50/50 about between residential and commercial and industrial about who's responsible for paying for the system. In Burbank, it's obviously different because there's more dollars coming in from the commercial and industrial section. That kind of scenario exists in all these municipal utilities, because there are different types of loads for different municipalities. I think Vernon is a good example of almost completely commercial industrial. It's almost like 95%. I think it has like 70 people that live there that is on the residential metering system. So, and they're, they're a good example of what a local municipal utility is like. That breakdown has an impact on who pays what. So our residents are going to pay more by comparison to Burbank, because they are responsible for a larger share of the system than Burbank's residents are. Does that make sense?
And, and you said about the increases they?
Yes, they just recently approved, it was 9.9 and 9.9, I believe, this, this fiscal year coming up and the next after that. There's lots of conversation. The general managers, we all talk, because we're all looking at what's going on in the future. And I can, I don't want to say exact numbers, but I can help you say that Pasadena, Burbank, other utilities are all talking about rate increases going forward in the next two to five years. And it's, all the rate increases we're talking about are above CPI. What I want to get our utility to is the ability to recognize that we need to have rate increases, but try and keep them capped at CPI. That's my goal. We're not quite there yet, but that's my goal.
Council members.
Mr. Mellon. So I think in the last couple of years, and I recognize that you weren't the general manager when this discussion first came up, but when we were initially having this conversation and the numbers were presented, I, I had noted that the average that staff was showing was actually inaccurate in what you would get in the average of your household in, in Glendale, because we are a tiered system. You and I, and with some of the other staff, time and again, have also talked about this tiered system, which I actually think is a very unfair system, that puts a larger burden on families, and it's not equitable, because if your electricity rate is higher because you're using more, well, a family that has four is naturally going to use more than a family of one or two, right? So this is the moment where I ask, beyond the conversations that we've had, if this council wanted to look at a different system, where we actually make it equitable for everybody, what, what do you need for us to, to at least take a look and explore, not a tiered system? Because again, I don't know who falls under that, you know, bottom tier that has the really low rate. But, you know, if I don't qualify alone with my dog, and I don't, I know I don't, and I'm almost never home, I don't know who does. So I, I'm, I'm going to use this opportunity, because, you know, again, we're all talking about electric rates. We recognize this council probably has received more emails and notifications from our residents saying that they can't make ends meet, and they're having a difficult time. And it, you know, I, I know that we all share in that concern of what this means for our residents, but also being fiscally responsible on the city's end. So what would that take for, for us to explore that?
I think first, we have to make sure we maintain our, keep our obligation within the current COSA, which puts us through 2028. There's nothing stopping us to look, from looking at the current structure to see if it actually makes sense, and then planning ahead for when we can make a transition. In, in fact, we can have those conversations anytime, but we need to understand what the goal is. If we're, if we're moving forward with electrification, which we are, we're pushing forward in all areas of electrification, and we understand that in order to make sure that our grid can handle electrification, including a higher concentration of solar and/or renewable energy resources within our grid, we're going to have to build. We have to make modifications of the system that include communications upgrades and response to power flows in our, our system. And I'm only saying that kind of as a caveat, right? As we look at these things, we have to consider what the future of the utility looks like, because we were trying to meet the, the future needs of these, of the city of Glendale. So.
Do the surrounding cities have this tiered system as well?
I believe there are cities that do have the tiered system, yes.
Because I don't even know where that came from and how.
It's a pretty common structure.
LADWC does, correct?
Yep. LADWP does. Subcalad does. A lot of them do.
Edison does as well?
Yeah. So it is a very common structure. I know, not to change the subject, but I know as we're beginning to talk about water sometime soon, we're going to be talking about the water COSA and, and the tiered structure for that also. We're considering options there. So the timing might be right to consider what it means to have a tiered system and what, you know, whether or not a, a flat rate on the kilowatt hour means. But we'll, we really have to consider a lot of what the infrastructure has to provide, what we're planning for in the infrastructure.
So I, I mean, I am going to use this opportunity to request that we agendize that or whatever you need to do for us to.
Sure. I appreciate that. That's fine.
Beyond the conversations we've had, especially if you think it is the right time, given the water side.
You can always have the conversation. I'm open to that.
I have a couple of questions, and they're very, I think, let's pull away for a moment. Our rates are determined by a COSA.
Yes.
Repeat again what COSA stands for.
Cost of Service Analysis.
And that's a requirement for the, for this utility to perform before any rate adjustment is made.
Yes, it's a way to ensure that we are paying for the services provided, no more, no less.
No more, no less. What if I told you, I think the rates are too damn high, roll them back to the 2020 levels? Because I got a bunch of emails saying that. Is that a fantasy land position?
It is. It's definitely fantasy right now, because, one, when you talk about generation that still needs to come online, our, our generation isn't going to be coming on until about a year from now at Grayson. You look about, you have to consider the impacts of the market, what we have access to. If we're going to transition to something that we can get more energy sold into or more accessible to other resources of energy, you're talking about EIM, which is, it's an imbalance market that we would have to get into. We have to work through LA to make that happen. We're looking at EDAM, which is another imbalance market, but in the day-ahead structure. All those things take time. We have to coordinate through LA, who's our balancing authority, to make that happen. There, we're talking a year or two tops before we can actually put things into motion that will actually supplement the budget anyways.
Okay. And our, I just keep it very basic, because this can get very confusing unless you're in the industry. Our rates are based on fixed costs, which include the infrastructure upgrades that you're talking about.
Right.
As well as the actual cost of electric purchase.
Right, the usage. Yep.
Now, if we don't invest in our infrastructure, what happens?
You have more failures.
Briefly, briefly. I mean,
Sure.
Sparks fly, there's arcing, there's outages, there's breakdowns, there's unreliability, and there's danger in the system. Is that correct?
Safety is our first and foremost rule.
And our, our variable cost, the purchase of electricity, if we wanted to go all-in on a coal plant in Utah, I don't even know if there are, although Trump wants to bring him back. But let's say we decided to go all-in, damn the environment, we just want the absolute cheapest energy that we could get. That would be a lower variable cost, which would be reflected in our rates.
Yes.
I mean, generally.
It would only influence the variable cost. And that's on the assumption that we'd have the ability to bring that energy on the transmission that's just already allocated.
But those decisions, especially the big decision on Grayson, which is both a, reflects an infrastructure investment and to some extent, the cost of electricity that we're going to be bringing in.
Yes.
Have already been made.
Yes, they have.
We can't change those. Those are the cards we have in our hand that we've got to play. Is that correct?
Absolutely. We've already made the commitment, and we have the obligation.
And if we're not happy with it, or some folks who believe that we shouldn't have invested in Grayson the manner we did, or that we shouldn't have the renewable portfolio that we do, it's just too late at this point. It's too bad.
Yeah, nothing, nothing that I could think of doing that would provide additional energy resources could happen any sooner than five to seven years from now.
Okay. So.
In system.
I could point the finger at myself and say, I made those bad decisions, but that doesn't change where we are today.
No.
By the way, I don't think those are bad decisions, but I'm sure there are many in the audience nodding their heads, high-fiving each other, that think those were bad decisions. But that's really irrelevant at this point. We are where we are.
That's right.
And we are here for different reasons, for environmental concerns, for reliability concerns, for many other reasons that we've discussed over the past six or seven years.
Yes.
But we are here, and we can't go back in time.
That is correct.
Okay, other questions? We do have some speakers. Would you like to hear from the speakers or go to them? Mr. Carpetian?
I have questions. If we didn't have the Grayson project, let's say it was in a decent shape and it was operating, did you have to have this many? did you have to have this many, this much increases, rate increases? At forty percent, or thirty-eight percent, or forty-two percent?
Sorry, are you asking if we kept the boilers, would we still need to do the...
No, let's say, I'm not saying keep the boilers. Let's say if the Grayson was in a decent shape, and we didn't have to replace the equipment or upgrade it today, would you, would you need, based on the current or previous costs that we had, because every facility has a cost, and the taxpayers or ratepayers pay those, the fixed costs, would you, would you have to have increases in this manner? Thirty, forty percent?
Yeah, if I understand the question correctly, and I'll, I'm going to say what I think you're asking. If, if the Grayson facility did not require an upgrade, and it was just as it was, and we were running it as we were, would we still need rate increases? Yes, not to the level that we're at now. The units were so old, they would have had to have had some work done. And the market being what it is, our, our units were less likely to be run, so we would have received less dollars from the running of those units in the market, because our heat rates were low.
And after the Grayson is up and running, the new facility, do you have the ability to run these machines in longer hours and generate power and sell it in open market? So maybe that could offset some of these increases?
So, the three units that we plan on putting online are capped. They have an emissions restriction, and they are restricted. The numbers are around fourteen percent is what we're looking at, the amount of hours, yes. So, if we ran them more, we have the potential to sell that excess energy into the market. The assumptions are this, that the market would be there to make it, and if, if we had to go ahead to get more hours out of those units, my staff would find a way to make money, otherwise we wouldn't sell the energy into the market. That's the trigger point. It's only to make money and to offset budget. So, yes, if we had an opportunity to run those units more, we'd, we'd only run them if we could make additional funds.
So, the reason you cannot do that, you don't have that option, is because you're capped at fourteen percent.
Yes.
Limit that, yeah. And that's, that's one of the wrong decisions that was made. Thank you.
Okay, let's hear from the public.
We have four speaker cards on this item. The first speaker is Mike Mohill, and I think Mr. Mohill is no longer here. The next speaker is Beth Brooks. You have three minutes. Following Beth Brooks is Ellen Dish and Jordan Henry.
Thank you. Mr. Garpetian was actually not incorrect. He was actually right. If you looked at the packet from the agenda item for this, this item, Exhibit A, Current and Proposed Electric Rates, Residential Service L-1-A, and you just took one line, which would be low season remaining kilowatts per hour, from 2023, it went to twenty-one cents, to November 2025, it went to thirty-nine cents. I don't know, that's kind of me, that's kind of double, that's what my math says. My math says if you went from twenty-one to thirty-nine, you kind of went double. I don't know as far as, you know, it went to forty-two percent and forty-three in cumulative and blah, blah, blah. I'm doing it really simple. Kilowatts per hour, here's your cost, here's your new cost, it's double. And if you just take a very simple calculation, and you take your bill, all right, that says it includes tax and other things, and you see kilowatts per hour, it, it basically doubled. So, I don't know, you know, what's going on here, but he, he was correct. The thing that, you know, is obviously concerning is that this whole Grayson thing, which is, again, is a done deal, was presented by Mr. Brodmann as saving us $175 million, which in my book, if you save money, you know, it should cost less. I don't know how this, you know, again, my simple math is just, you know, very simple, it should cost less, so it's costing more. So, if this is supposed to cost less, is it ever going to cost less? I mean, are my grandchildren going to get cheaper electricity? Is it always going to go up every year? Because it keeps going up and up and up and up. And the other thing I would love to see, and then at the community academy I went to, where Scott was speaking, where he said, and he was very good, and I have to run out, I'm really sorry, where he was speaking, and he said, look, the state has certain mandates for electrification, but the city actually has even stricter mandates. We actually went a step further. Now, that's my concern. I would love to see from every single department at this point, here's the money we have, and here's where it's going. I would love a chart. We're taking this money, and this project, these solar panels cost this, and this cost that. And then you, you know, you reduce the, you know, you just do the math, again, math, you subtract it at the end, this is what we have left. I would love to see that, because when I hear, when I hear you say things based upon the, you know, the elephant in the room of the parking lots, you're not exactly the most trustworthy people on the planet, so I'm very concerned about that. I really would like to see some definitive, here's what we take in, and here's where it goes, because if he's telling us that you actually went further in electrification, and the reason we're paying for this is because of the green agenda, I don't think people are very happy about that. Thank you.
Question for Ms. Brooks.
Yes.
By the way, I hear you're one of the top students at the community academy.
Am I? Because of Nick, because I love that girl so much, she's my queen.
So what...
She's my queen.
What advice do you have to give us right now?
Yeah.
For what we're facing right now?
What can you undo regarding your green energy?
The answer is nothing.
What can, so there's nothing, what can you put a halt to?
Mr. Mellon, can we put a halt to anything?
And I would like to see, not, I don't just want his word, I want to see it on paper. What are you spending? What can you not put a halt to, and why can't you put a halt to it? I think you have to be extremely transparent.
And if there's nothing we can put a halt to, you would say, do the increase?
I don't know. I'll let us, actually, not like that, no, I would say no.
You would say no?
I would say cost cut.
Cost cut.
Find out where you can cost cut. Yeah, let's see the specifics.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry.
I'll call you up better later.
No, 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 I want to see the details and the specifics of why everything is so fixed, you can't change anything. How far along are you in the solar panels? Where have you done electrification? Why do you need to buy more EV chargers? You know, for, for, why are you, you're taking the fleet electrification, you don't need electric vehicles for every single car that you have in the city?
That's a different issue. But thank you.
Are you using that money? Is, are we having rate increases because of that?
I will, I'll thank you for...
Thank you.
For your rapport, and we'll go to the next speaker, and we may have the answers afterwards.
Next speaker is Ellen Dish. Following Ellen is Jordan Henry.
Council, City Council, good evening. My name's Ellen Dish. This will be my final speech of the night. First, through the mayor to Council, Mr. Councilman Brodmann, you came on a campaign to redevelop Grayson Power Plant with the promise of making it more green, and that it would provide money for the city. I supported many others also, but as we know, the second part of the formula did not happen. So, I think it's in the best interests of the city to have an investigation. Now, I'm not an expert, and I am worried about this increasing deference just to expert rule. Nonetheless, thank you for hearing us, because, but we should avoid the trap of just blaming, Mr. Brodmann, because I think the situation is much more tragic, especially, you know, with this, but this is not the only issue, that tariffs were imposed. I like the fact that we asked for a waiver, I mean, for the generators coming from Mexico, so can we have a update on that? My second point, though, again, to distinguished Councilmember Brodmann, I think it's too easy when you are criticized for having connections or your time spent in China, as if this is part of that green agenda again. But you know what, you know why I'm saying this? Because isn't it true that China is today the leader in solar panel production, in EVs and AI? So, Mr. Mayor, I refer to you now, because it was Nixon, a conservative, who opened the path to China. Can you, I'm being sincere, but in a comical way maybe also, but like, can you go to China, visit China, see what we can do? Why are we not, and now I conclude, electrifying our, the biggest resource we have besides oil in Southern California, and no more oranges, but sun? Why do we not have solar panels on our clothing, on the rooftops, on the rooftops? That's what I mean also, that if we were to take this seriously, much more than, but in addition to, I'm approaching the end, the furnaces that we want to redo, I think we would have a much better solution to the situation, and I conclude by saying thank you.
One thing.
Mr. Brodmann?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I heard a reference to this hundred and seventy million, which I had talked about. These were not my numbers. These were from the IRP. These were from GWP. So, I would encourage people to go back and look at the, I think it was 2018 IRP, that is probably the date when, when GWP came back, after that decision to reconsider the original project. GWP came back, I think it was in 2018, and presented the alternative. They presented an IRP. The IRP showed the cost savings over the original system. I can give, I've done it before, I can give the page numbers on that, but that's, that's where the numbers come from. I don't have the ability to calculate those kinds of numbers, so they weren't mine.
Our final speaker is Jordan Henry.
Thank you for taking my comments. I have to say, very simply, I told you guys so. Told all of you, 2022, I ran for City Council, and I don't like to pat myself on the back about this. This is disgusting. Dan, look up, I'm talking. Dan, you should really pay attention, because you didn't for years, and now we're in this situation where you have to lie to the public, you have to blame the people that you hire to take care of these IRPs, to give you the numbers that bolster your own argument, and you're still not paying attention, just like you didn't do in 2022. Ara, yes, you, I'm really glad that you held yourself accountable, I mean, even though you kind of backpedaled, you're really good at that. It's unfortunate you do that. In 2022, my argument is the exact as it is today. You guys, in 2017, which is what I stated three years ago, you could have expanded Grayson, correct me if I'm wrong, you don't have to, because I'm very certain I'm right. It could have been expanded at 260 megawatt hours, or megawatts, for $500 million. That is $1.4 million per megawatt. Under Dan Brodmann's leadership, and Ara, you, for whatever reason, you succumbed to it, even Vartan delayed the IRP in 2018 to come up with better renewable options. This is absurd that you guys did this. And then in 2025, we're now at half that megawattage, 130, correct? For 686 million? That's $5.3 million per megawatt hour, or per megawatt? Dan, are you listening? Dan, you're the economist. 1.4 times what gives you 5.3 million per megawatt? It's 3.8. That's a 380% increase per megawatt. Guys, I'm a landscape architect, I got a master's degree in music, I can figure this stuff out. You can figure it out. You're an attorney, dude. What do you do? What do you do, Artie? You studied history, you couldn't have figured this out? Vartan, you're a developer. Dan, you're an economist. Ellen, I don't really know what you do. But seriously, you guys couldn't have figured this out? I, I, that's unfathomable to me. I'm busy, I got like newborns at home, and I can spend, you know, a couple hours scratching down some numbers, reading articles in publications, and figuring out what the hell is going on, and you can't? There's no excuse, you can't blame it on GWP. They were following your orders, and Dan, you led the whole, you brokered the deal, Dan. You ran on that, you quote-unquote, "I brokered the deal," and that's your campaign ad, Dan. Pathetic, don't lie. It's disgusting. Again, disgusting, I say it all the time, about all of you.
Any other speakers?
That is all.
Mr. Mellon, is there anything that you'd like to say that hasn't been said that's relevant and pertinent to our discussion?
I just want to clarify one thing. So, a yes vote on this spreads the rate increase over three years. A no vote on this means the entire rate increase happens immediately, is that correct?
On November 1st, yes.
November 1st?
Yes.
So if we vote yes, we're spreading it?
Yep.
If we vote no, the entire increase is happening all at once on November 1st?
That is correct.
Okay.
That's the issue.
That's what we're voting on. I want to make sure what a yes and no vote means here.
Mr. Galan?
I just want to clarify that tonight's ask is to introduce the ordinance, so we're not voting on it.
Oh, good.
Okay.
We'll bring it back on the 7th for adoption and voting.
Okay. Well, I'm going to jump out and say that I will introduce the ordinance to spread the increase over three years and not have the 11% go into effect November 1st. We can still have discussion, though, if anyone wants to discuss.
Couple of points. Ms. Brooks was asking about where we can maybe cut corners, or maybe we can not do some projects. The fleet electrification cost in 2023 report was $124 million, which is unfunded. I don't know how much was it, is done, how much is going to be done, how much is in, it's in the works already? That's one, one place we can, we can look into. Also, this project was $500 million with 130 megawatt, and it costs, it is costing us with Shoal Canyon about $670 million. But in Grayson, we have only three engines with, which is 50 or 55 megawatt, new engines? Sorry?
Fifty-six.
Fifty-six megawatt. So, you cut it down to one-third of the energy with $175 million more cost. There you go.
Okay. I think that just about does it. Madam Clerk, what's next?
Next is Action Item B, Fire Department, regarding request to establish a standardization of specialized gurney equipment manufactured by Furno Washington. A resolution to adopt the standardization policy and authorize the purchases, the purchase of gurneys and gurney maintenance and repair supplies from Furno Washington.
Mr. Galanian?
Yes, Mayor Najarian, Member of City Council. Our very fine Glendale Fire Department has been using Furno exclusively for the purchase of new gurneys and all the necessary equipment and supplies since the inception of the pandemic paramedic program in the year 2000. The ability to put these gurneys in a chair configuration allows our first responders to operate in tight spaces, which typically they do. The recommended standardization would maintain our existing fleet of 23 gurneys, and we have a staff member who is a certified Furno advanced gurney technician to perform the necessary repairs and maintenance in-house. And this creates a significant reduction in cost and downtime. With that, Battalion Chief Tucker is available if you have any questions, and the recommendation to use to approve the resolution to adopt equipment and standardization for the purchase of gurneys, maintenance, and repair supplies from Furno Washington.
Thank you. Any cards, Madam Clerk?
No cards on this item.
No cards. Any questions or a motion from Council?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Kasakian, Brodmann, roll call, please.
Councilmember Asadrian?
Yes.
Brodmann?
Yes.
Garpetian?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes. Next item?
Next is Action Item C, Management Services, regarding appointment of voting delegate and alternative representative for the 2025 League of California Cities Conference. A motion designating a voting delegate and alternate representative for the 2025 League of California Cities Conference.
So, the League of Cities Conference is this weekend?
It's Mayor Najarian on October 8th and 9th, and three council members will be attending. So, with this item, we are soliciting candidates, volunteers, names that will represent the city at the general conference.
Who would like to be considered as the voting delegate?
I'm fine being it, if no one else wants it, but I don't have to be it. If someone else prefers it, they can be the voting delegate.
I'm not sure I'll be going.
I'm going. I think the three of us are going, right?
Correct. Councilmember Garpetian, Kasakian, and Asadrian have been, have asked to attend and registered.
I have, I've been a voting delegate before, so if one of my colleagues would want to be the voting delegate, and as voting delegate, you vote on the items. I mean, rarely is it controversial, a lot of it is discussed in committees, and then you cast a vote, and you... A lot of it is discussed in committees, and then you cast a vote, and you put Glendale on the record, either usually supporting a lot of the issues that cities are concerned about, particularly with mandates from Sacramento. So if anyone wants to do it, that's fine.
I've been a delegate, I mean, I've been a delegate before, so if council member Asakian wants it.
I would propose Councilmember Kasakian to be the voting delegate, and Councilmember Asatarian to be the alternate. Is there any objection to that?
No.
Do we need a roll call on that?
Yeah.
You do.
Need a motion, a second? Sorry.
Okay.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
Someone second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Asadrian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Garpetian?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes. Next item, please. Item D was taken off, correct?
Continued, yes. So next are hearings. Item A, Community Development, regarding public hearing regarding request for approval of a density bonus discretionary bonus and inclusionary housing plan pursuant to state and city density bonus law to construct a new 43-unit residential housing of nine affordable units. Housing development project located at 441 and 445 West Glen Oaks Boulevard, providing a total of nine affordable units, including a total of six reserved for very low-income households, and three reserved for moderate-income households. Density bonus housing plan case number PDBP-003898-2024. One, motion to approve density bonus discretionary bonus and inclusionary housing plan. Two, motion to deny density bonus discretionary bonus and inclusionary housing plan.
Mr. Galanian.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Najarian. Member of City Council, Melka Toledo is gearing up and is ready to present this item with Yvette Nukion from the City Attorney's Office, who has helped prepare the report to answer your questions.
Open the hearing.
I will officially open the hearing. Whenever you're ready.
Okay, good evening, Mayor Najarian, council members. My name is Melka Toledo. I am the case planner assigned to this case. It's a density bonus and inclusionary housing plan located at 441 and 445 West Glen Oaks Boulevard. The project involves the demolition of two existing residential buildings containing a total of eight dwelling units on site and carports, and it was built in 1942. And it is in conjunction with the construction of a new 43-unit multifamily density bonus housing development totaling approximately 37,898 square feet with 29 residential parking spaces on site within a one-level semi-subterranean parking structure. And the project, as stated, will provide affordable, a total of nine affordable units, with six units reserved for very low-income households and three for moderate-income households. The unit mix includes 19 studios and 24 one-bedroom units. And the applicant, again, is seeking approval of the density bonus, requesting for a total of 138.9% total density bonus, of which 38.9% would be discretionary. This is the proposed rendering of what the building would look like facing the street eventually moving forward. The project will be required to go through the designer review board, so the designer review board will be the, a review authority for the design of the project. In terms of the location, it is Zoned R1250, high-density residential zone. The subject site is approximately 17,101 square feet. Again, currently, it's developed with two separate buildings consisting of eight residential dwellings and associated parking. This is pictures of the existing site conditions currently developed. And in terms of context, to the east is a two-story, basically everything surrounding the site is R1250, which is a high-density residential, except for across the street to the south, which is commercial, C2, commercial zone. So to the east, we have a two-story residential. To the west, directly to the left, is also a two-story residential, and to the rear is also a two-story residential, with the exception of a three-story medical office directly across the street. So in terms, again, of the density bonus, in this case, staff is recommending that the city council approve the discretionary density bonus request because it is compatible with the neighborhood and will provide a wide variety of housing opportunities for many income categories. 50% market-rate housing, 33% affordable to very low-income households, and 17% affordable to moderate-income households. Also, the project will increase overall housing supply and help the city meet their goals of the recently adopted housing element of the general plan. Also, the project parcels are listed on the housing element site inventory, which each designated for a total of four above-moderate-income units, resulting in a combined total of eight above-moderate-income units. The project would exceed the affordability assumption set forth in the housing element by 26 above-moderate-income units, six very-low-income units, and three modern-income units. And lastly, pursuant to state density bonus law, the project is proposing four concessions. They are providing 16% level affordability, so they are proposing four concessions. That would include increase the maximum allowed building height and number of stories. The project proposes four stories, 47 feet overall height, which would be 11-foot height increase. The zoning code allows a maximum of three stories, 36 feet. They're proposing an increase of the maximum FAR floor area ratio. Total FAR is 2.21, exceeding the maximum allowed by 1.0. The zoning allows a max of 1.2, which would equates to 20,521 square feet. The project is also proposing to reduce common open space. The project proposes approximately 4,200 of common open space, and in their request is a, it would result in a 3,490 square foot reduction. And in terms of item four, they're not providing additional open space. In this case, the project would, a minimum of 900 square feet of additional open space for lots greater than 90 feet would be required that exceed a density plus an additional 20 square feet. In this case, they're not providing it. In addition, they are proposed, they are requesting five additional wa, excuse me, five waivers, which includes a decrease in minimum unit size. They're proposing 19 units that would be less than 600 square feet, ranging from approximately 500 square feet to 598 square feet, where the zoning requires a minimum of 600 square feet for efficiency in one-bedroom units. They're also requesting a waiver to increase the lot coverage from 50% to 53.45%. The maximum allowed per the zoning code is 50%, which equates to 9,184 square feet. The project proposes 9,141 square feet, which would exceed the maximum allowed by 591 square feet. And they're also proposing decreased minimum setbacks along the east side, as well as on the west side, on some of the floors. And lastly, they are requesting a waiver to reduce the minimum 25% landscape open space by approximately 2,495 square foot reduction. They're proposing approximately 1,700 or 1,780 square feet. That would conclude my presentation. If you have any questions for staff, I am available to answer them.
Any questions?
Just one quick one. On your presentation, you said council may approve or deny this request for, I got cut off here, but considering several factors, including, one of them is housing type. What is that? What do you mean by that?
In this case, and I will defer also to our legal team, in, for example, maybe the sizes, the location, if there's anything else, the rental type, if there's anything else I need to add, but that would be.
Not quite sure I understand.
Good evening, Mayor Najarian, members of City Council, and Councilmember Brotman. Specifically, when we adopted that provision of the Glendale municipal code that gives council the ability to approve or deny a discretionary density bonus above the state minimums, the housing type referred to, if there was a certain housing type that the council felt was lacking in Glendale, for example, for-sale housing or rental housing, whichever was, was the case, the council could weigh that factor in its decision. For example, if this was a condominium and the council felt it needed or wanted, desired more condominiums, that could be something that weighed in favor of granting the discretionary density bonus.
Okay.
Okay. Why don't we hear from the public?
Mayor Najarian, we have five speaker cards and four callers.
The applicant?
Yes.
Let's give you five minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and the City Council members. My name is Farnoosh Farmer. I represent Boladark, the applicant on this project, and I'm a project designer. As mentioned in the staff presentation, we're here to present a new 43-unit development project located at 441 and 445 West Glen Oaks Boulevard. Before talking about the project, I'd like to take a moment and briefly introduce Boladark. Our firm has been around for almost three decades, and we have designed multiple unique multifamily projects in Glendale, which to this day are getting positive feedback and recognition from both residents and developers in terms of quality of living and design. The subject property is 17,100 square foot lot, and it is within the R1250 zone. We are proposing a four-story, 43-unit development, which includes 32 market-rate units plus nine affordable units. The proposed building, as mentioned, will replace the existing one-story, eight-unit multifamily building originally built in 1942. We are providing nine affordable units, again, as mentioned, since six of which are very low and three units are moderate incomes. The site plan all around is designed to be landscape-friendly, incorporating pockets of greenery, amenities, and seating areas throughout the project. Our design also features, further introduces landscaping and natural elements into inside of the building, and you can see it in the middle of the site plan. Floor one, floors one through three, we are proposing two.
Can you pause for a moment, please?
Yes.
Stop for time.
I asked for larger plans of, of this project because the ones that was in our packet was in a smaller version, I couldn't read the whole thing. And looking at the, the larger version, I do have a conflict of interest because I am representing one of the consultants they have, one electrical engineers they have. So on, on a, on a real estate deal, so I have to, I just asked our city attorney, I just noticed that because I could read the larger one. So I, I asked the city attorney, and he said that I have to recuse myself of this project.
I'm sorry, that's a mandatory recuse.
Correct. I mean, it sounds like the source of, it sounds like a source of income, especially when it's a commission, it's promised income based on there being a transaction. So and without having the exact rule in front of me, I have a balance of caution, I advise Mr. Garpetian.
For the record, I do not know the applicants, I do not know the owners. I just noticed in the list of the consultants that they have that I have a conflict of interest with one of the consultants.
I just, Mr. Garcia, can you clarify for mine?
So.
It's not, it's definitely not a mile away from my place.
Yeah, I'm looking at the map, I don't, the original source, again, if you, you know, I'm looking at the map, and nobody, I don't have a measurement to for sure say it's more than 1,000 feet, so I mean, if you want, out of a balance of caution.
The 1,000 feet is the requirement here, right?
Correct.
Okay, I will.
Okay, can we put her to 3 minutes 30 seconds? Because we may have thrown you off.
Do I need to repeat the previous slide?
No, no. No, you were.
Okay. Floors one through three, we are proposing 12 units per floor, which include seven one-bedroom units and five studios. For the fourth floor, which is the top floor, we're proposing an articulated footprint to reduce the massiveness and to take advantage of the natural mountain views. The offsetting also allows for creating outdoor areas in, in the front and a spacious common area in the back, featuring an adjacent fitness room. We are also proposing seven units on this level, which include three one-bedroom units and four studios. Our design approach was to create a friendly environment on this level for tenants to foster community interaction while taking full advantage of the scenic mountain views. Overall, we are proposing a contemporary architectural style that complements, complements the language of the mid-rise buildings in Glendale. The project also features our signature architectural element, which is a custom-pattern cut plate, a cut metal plate. This feature reflects a consistent design language that we have previously successfully implemented in two of our other previous projects in Glendale. In the interest of time, I will skip the other elevations on this project. And I hereby conclude the project, I conclude the presentation. We are wishing to receive your blessing, support, and approval for our project. We are very excited and proud to have the opportunity to design another unique building in the city of Glendale. And I will remain available to answer any questions that council may have. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there any questions of the presenter? Maybe later, we'll go to the.
Next speaker is Beth Brooks. You have three minutes.
Yeah, going to all these meetings about housing and density is quite an eye-opener. So my question is, if 40% is discretionary and that you don't have to give the discretionary bonus, I don't, I don't think you should. If you can make this a lower footprint, I think you should. I mean, from what I can tell, it's like a developer just throws in some affordable units, and they get everything. We don't have to have this open space, we don't have to have this, we don't have to have that because we're giving affordable units. And in this case, most of them, I'm sure, will be studios. So that would be 36 instead of 44 units that hopefully you can get to three stories instead of four, because that's right behind Kaiser. I know exactly where that is. So I don't know, you know, I just don't understand the whole process. I know because of the density bonus law, that really you just throw in affordable units, and you get to just double, triple, quadruple, add, you know, more units and units and units, and we just get bigger and bigger and bigger apartment buildings. I mean, there, you know, I have some ideas about how to, you know, push back that I could talk about in oral communications, but what I just heard was something very interesting, that if you feel that, that we don't have enough condos, that you can deny this project because we need more condos? How would you, is there like a list of how many condos we should have? Because I actually think that we're, we're creating a city of mostly renters, and renters are, I'm a renter, but renters are not stakeholders, they are transient. And you need more stakeholders, you need people to buy property, you need more residential, you know, single-family homes, you need more condos, you need more people who can actually put down roots and families. And I would think that you should actually be pushing for more condos than you should be for more rental units. We have, you know, whatever, 55 to probably much more, 57,000 rental units, and every time you're building, it's just 600 more, 800 more, 400 more. I mean, it's just, it's out of control. You know, you really, I think, need to start thinking about if you're going to do this stuff, first of all, there are ways to push back, again, I will talk about that later, but that you need to push homeownership. And if that means condo ownership, you should push condo ownership. It's a different mentality. It's a mentality where they have a stake in the neighborhood and will stay longer. It's a mentality where they have a stake in the neighborhood and will stay longer. It's not a transient mentality. You see different people who come up here, like the Yimby's, they, they just want big, giant construction because they're not invested in the neighborhoods. They're not invested in the people and in the communities, they're in a different way. That's why they want warehouses, because their mentality is like that. It's not a permanent mentality. So I think, think about that, that you should be pushing homeownership in any way that you can, because it's also generational wealth and it's better for people. Thank you.
Next is Jean Pierre Boladian. Oh, okay, skip that. Jim, Jim Diener?
I'm Jim Diener. I have the apartment at 449 West Glen Oaks. Apartment next door is one of several apartments that have less parking spaces than units. I have two units who do not have a parking space, and I'm about 30% undermarket at this time. 20 years ago, a gentleman got in my car to move it to get more space in the street. Got physically involved with a gentleman, and we ended up both on the street. I don't want to see that again, that situation. There is 22 spaces from Pacific to San Rafael that can be parked on the street. I got with Jeff Brown and city representative for city parking. I got permit parking on those 22 spaces. That has impacted San Rafael. I've gotten complaints from others saying now our tenants can't park on, from San Rafael on there, because I was the personal individual, went door to door, and got signatures of 80%, which I was told to get, and Jeff Brown pushed it through. I don't know if he's still currently in that position or job. There is at least five every day handicap Kaiser Permanente people. They are being charged $2, they'll avoid paying to go into Kaiser. 22 parking spaces are going to get reduced. It looks, with the pictures I've just seen, possibility of those three spaces in front of these two current units are going to get reduced, so it'll be down to 20. 29 parking spaces being for 43 units, they are fooling you that people will not have a car. Okay? In a two-bedroom unit, you're going to have two cars. In a one-bedroom unit, you're lucky to get an individual with one car. I have a Section 8, does not have a car, 30% undermarket, and one other individual, her daughter, been there 10 years, and now they got two cars. And they're in, I would call, low-income housing that was personally choice not being advertised as that. Thank you for hearing me out. I cannot see how you can approve this.
Next is Alan Durham.
Mayor Najarian, members of the council, I'm Alan Durham. I watched the last DRB meeting. That was a design review board meeting where they approved the Brody project that's going to replace Glendale Garden Homes. And issues came up during that hearing because members of the DRB had objections to the design of that project. Our outside counsel for the city of Glendale remotely attended that meeting. I believe her name is Barbara Kautz, if I'm not mispronouncing it. She's from Goldfarb Littman. And during the meeting, she opined that design changes for a bonus density project must use objective design standards, not subjective design guidelines. And Glendale currently still has subjective design guidelines, not objective design standards. And I remember Viliya Zemetidis from Community Development. She gave council a presentation on proposed objective design standards for Glendale when Paula Devine was still on this council. That was years ago, and I've never seen it come back to council. And it's limiting what the DRB can do, particularly with these state laws coming into effect. And I'm just curious as to whatever happened to those proposed objective design standards for Glendale. Thank you.
Next, we will move to the callers. The first caller is Shane. Shane, you're on air, you have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Shane Lee. I am with Glendale Yimby, and I fully support this project. We need to build baby build in Glendale. The staff also recommends this project, and you know, Bradley Calvert and all of those people are super smart and they're super amazing, so I always just abide by what they say. I love that this project, first of all, it's right by the Kaiser that I go to all the time, and I always look at that one-story building, and it seems so out of place because there's two-story apartments right next to it. And I've always thought it would be nice if we could demolish it and build something like really substantial in that neighborhood so that the doctors and the staff members who work at Kaiser don't need to commute, they could just live right there. So it would be fantastic. And the second thing I love about this project is that the developers went above and beyond to include affordability units. They included much more affordability units than they needed. They exceeded it by 26 above moderate income units, and then they built six additional very low-income units, according to the staff report. So I cannot recommend this project enough. I think Glendale, we need more renters. Renters have a better mentality, we should be a city of renters, and the more renters the better. We need more rental properties because it's a lower barrier to entry. I'm young and I don't have like, I don't have like hundreds of thousands of dollars saved up yet because I'm paying off my student loans. There's no way I could afford a down payment on a really nice condo, but I could easily get, afford like a down payment on an apartment. So rental units are better because they're much lower barrier to entry. So I really want to just tell you how awesome I think this project is. Yeah, also, a lot of Glendaleans don't own a car, it's at least 13%. I do not own a car, I do not like owning cars, I have a lot of car anxiety, I've been in car crashes, cars are dangerous. I don't want extra parking, I don't need it, it's ugly. Parking lots and, you know, parking garages are ugly. The less parking spaces, the better. So please approve this project. God bless you all, and have a wonderful night. You're doing a great job. Bye.
I'd just like to remind the audience to please keep your conversations to zero when someone else is speaking, especially someone speaking over the telephone lines, because it was very difficult to hear even in the best of situations. Person in the back, looking down. We won't name him. Next, please.
Next is Kyle Bogosian. Kyle, you're on air, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Yes, I'm Kyle Bogosian. I want to remind everyone that this location is basically one block away from one of the bus rapid transit stops that's planned for the North Hollywood to Pasadena BRT line. We're going to have a BRT stop on Glen Oaks and Pacific, so this is a great location for high-density transit-oriented development. I also want to say that me personally, I live like three blocks away with my parents on Burchett Street, and if I can ever move to my own place and have space for my own children, then this apartment would be exactly, you know, in exactly the right location where I would be looking to hopefully move into an apartment. So I really support this. I'm with Glendale Yimby, and we are in support of this, so please move this project forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Alex Belikian. You're on air, you have three minutes.
Hi, I would like to encourage the council not to give the waivers on this matter. Nothing about this building is helpful for Glendale. The current property has eight units, seven of which are one-bedroom apartments that measure an average of 650 square feet, and one two-bedroom apartment that is just under 1,000 square feet. All units have a covered parking space, all units have plenty of common green space. The new development would not have a two-bedroom apartment. Of the 24 one-bedroom apartments, only six of them have square footage that is similar to the existing apartments. All of the others are smaller by about 100 square feet, so you are not replacing the two-bedroom that's being destroyed, and you are not adequately replacing all seven one-bedroom apartments that are being destroyed. The units that are set aside for low-income people are the smaller units. Do you want to be accused of being elitist by setting aside the small undesirable units for the low-income people? When we talk about affordability, we talk about rates. When we're buying or renting a residence, we always look at the price per square foot. So if the existing renters in the homes that are going to be destroyed, if their rent didn't increase, they would actually be moving into smaller apartments, they would be getting less for their money. If you approve these waivers, you actually increase their cost of living because you increase the price per square foot that the people are going to have to pay. Again, they get less for their money. As it stands, 14 units would have no parking. The street in front of this building has no parking on one side. I live here. The nearest intersection is with Pacific, which has two lanes in either direction, and there's only a single stop sign directing traffic, and this is also a school access road for Hoover and Toll and Keppel. It is unreasonable to think that people won't be using their cars, and the street outside is incapable of absorbing an increased parking load. Finally, these new apartments have no green space. The apartments are tiny matchbox studios, they are shoeboxes. Glendale is a community of families. You are not going to get parents raising their kids in this building. In the existing building, you could have a couple living in a one-bedroom apartment and having an infant in their same bedroom, and when that infant becomes a toddler, they can walk outside on the lawn. If they wanted to, they could grow into the two-bedroom that is currently there, and they could have their child play out on the lawn. But this new building allows for none of that. So I ask you, are we building units to please the state of California, or are we building residences that are of good quality and are consistent with the character and spirit of Glendale? I urge you, please do not grant these waivers. Thank you.
Our next caller is Alex Y. Alex, you're on air, you have three minutes.
I support this project, support more housing in Glendale. Some comments, I live within a mile of this site, so I know it well. This site actually is in a very walkable area, you can walk for all your basic needs for groceries, medical care, dry cleaner, laundry, shops, restaurants, another speaker mentioned, and it's true, this is very close to existing bus lines actually that are useful, and the future BRT stop coming in a few years. So actually, to the developer and to the architect, please reassess your plans and see if under SB 79 you can build more density at this site. I encourage you to analyze that before you commit to this plan. I think you should leverage and build as many units as you can on this site, preferably two, three-bedroom family-oriented units, that would be great. And you really don't need that much parking on this site, it's up to you to include it. Parking makes units more expensive. For all the people here who don't understand, the construction industry, when you build more parking generally these days, it's underground, and every spot you add, every floor you add, excavation costs, et cetera, it drives up the cost of the rent. So you're actually making the housing cost more, and somebody might be able to afford it without it and be fine getting around on bus, walking around in that area. It's a very lovely, walkable area for everything you need. Moving to the design, you know, I wish Glendale could just waive all these stupid requirements about breaking up the mass and this and that. I mean, the design is a complete mess. It's so, it's utterly insane, all this breaking up the mass on the spot, it looks like a nightmare, it looks like a nightmare for waterproofing. Back in the day, you know, in the 2030s, they just knew how to build just a square box with nice ornamentation, classic proportions, classic timeless proportions, nice architectural line, quality material, that's all you need. You don't need fancy stuff to make buildings look, and you can fit more units in that way, it's simpler to construct, it's cheaper, it looks just fine. The design is a mess. So I hope that, you know, the developer architect hears that. I hope the city hears that. Just let people build the way they used to, with nice signs, nice architecture. We need more housing in the city. All the opposition to this is just hilarious to me. You guys need to understand supply and demand, and the only way you're going to get more units is to build more. So, thank you.
Thank you, and that was the final caller.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions of?
I do have a couple of questions, Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Pissak.
So in the breakdown of these units, where it says nine affordable, six very low, three moderate, do we have approximate dollar figure associated with what constitutes? At least, I understand it may take some time for the project to be built if it's approved by council, but just now, in this particular time that we're in, at this moment, what is the amount that we consider affordable, what is very low, and what is moderate?
I don't have that information. I'll defer to our city attorney staff if they have it handy.
Good evening, once again, Mayor Najarian, members of council. A moderate-income household earns between 80 and 120% of area median income. I don't have a rental figure for you, but that's-
How can we get that figure? The reason I say that is because when we talk about affordable, I don't know if, you know, it's a statement, it's a word-
Right.
But I think people think more in terms of dollars and cents, as we heard, as we were discussing item with utility rates. Let's try to at least get that. I know-
I can try to work on that.
Yeah, thanks. And then I know that other jurisdictions will negotiate like a higher ratio of affordability or density. You know, we have, let's say, three moderate here. Why couldn't it be nine affordable and nine very low? Has staff attempted to try and negotiate for that? What is, where do you stand with that?
This is the, what the applicant had requested in terms of negotiating with them regarding that. I'd have to defer to the applicant to see if they've actually reached out to our housing staff and had that dialogue with them in terms of if they were to change, for example, the level of affordability and therefore providing more affordable units, if that's something that would pencil out for them, if they've had that discussion, I don't know. I would have to defer to the applicant.
Nothing at this moment.
I just want to clarify, at this stage, we had not reached out to housing department to negotiate any rates, and the project is as we proposed in the application.
Okay. I have a question for Milka. So let's be clear, the density bonus is, this is SB 1818, so we have no discretion to affect the bonus from 18 to 36 units?
Correct, because they are allowed up to 100%. What you do have discretion for is what they're exceed, when they exceed the 100%, which puts them at 38.9% above the 100 or 100%.
Does that mean they would be by right able to build up to 36 units?
Correct.
So anything that, you know, we heard some comments from the public of to try and claw back it, claw it back and keep it, that would not be-
Correct.
-allowable?
No. You, if, if the changes would result in losing units, when they're allowed a certain amount by right, in this case, the 36 total, or any changes that are being requested that would compromise there, for example, their requests for concessions and potentially waivers, it is my understanding that in that case, that would not be something that would be allowed, if it would compromise the concessions and the waivers.
So are the waivers discretionary? The waivers being the decreased unit size, increased lot coverage, and the decreased minimum average setback on the east side and the setback on the west side? Those are, those are called waivers?
Correct.
Are those discretionary on council's behalf at this point?
Evening again, council. Those are, the answer is, they are not discretionary as long as there is some evidence and substantial evidence that not granting the waiver would physically preclude the development as designed with the incentives and with the additional density bonus, the 100% density bonus that they're entitled to. So if you take it the way it's been designed, with all the incentives factored in and the density factored in- way it's been designed with all the incentives factored in and the density factored in, if they could build that without the waivers, then you can say no. But if they cannot build that without the waivers, and in this case, it appears that there's some evidence, a lot of evidence, that, you know, based on the plans and based on, you know, the waivers that they are requesting are going to allow them to build more physical building to allow for all those incentives and all the additional density. So if, if not granting the waiver would, if granting the waiver, as long as they can show that they need those waivers in order to build the building, physically build the building, then they are not discretionary. That's the only way that you can deny that.
How about if I was going to say, I'm stuck with the 36 units. I don't want to give them the extra eight, or whatever that number is, the extra seven. Does that in any way affect the decision on the waivers? Can that decision be made independent of approving or denying those waivers?
Yes, that decision can be. The discretionary density bonus, you have discretion on. But you would have to also make, not strictly findings, but there are factors that you would have to weigh and come to a determination based on all of those factors that you're, you know, it's not compatible with the neighborhood, it's not the appropriate housing type, et cetera, all the factors that are in our municipal code.
That's what Mr. Rotman was referring to earlier.
Correct.
Okay.
I could just add, so, the project is designed with the 43 units and the incentives and the waivers. So if the council denies, doesn't agree to grant the discretionary waiver, they're going to have to go back and design the project and...
Yeah.
Determine, and then determine how many concessions and waivers they need at that point. So I think the essential question before you is, do you want to grant the amount of density? If you say no, they'll have to go back and design, they'll have to decide whether it's feasible to go forward, and if it is, they'll have to, and it sounds like they're saying it isn't, but if, they'll have to go back and see if they could redesign a project that complies with the 100% bonus they're entitled to as a matter of law.
And at that point, they may or may not need as many waivers, or they may need the same waivers. It may not matter.
It's really, you know...
And I think what your staff is saying, because, as a 43-unit project, I think they don't see any evidence that they don't need those additional incentives and waivers to get those 43 units on the site. Is that correct? That's what I'm hearing. So, if you approve the density, they most likely need those additional waivers and concessions. If you don't, they may not, and then they'll have to go back and redesign the project.
This is really, again, this part of the whole issue of taking away the local control to make suggestions to a building design and approval that is being usurped by the state at this point. That's just a comment. You don't have to answer that.
Wait, are you suggesting that we can't make comments about them having 29 parking spots or not approving the additional units?
The seven additional units, the discretionary density bonus, is up to council based on the factors contained in our municipal code, which are in the staff report. The parking is automatic. It's an automatic density bonus reduction of parking, which...
But if it's not 43, and then it goes back down to 36 units, given the area, I mean, I can speak to that area. I walk it. I live there. I'm apparently 3,000 square, or 3,000 feet away from this property.
I think it's a little bit less, but yeah. I think it's a little bit less.
I mapped, I did Google Maps. But, I mean, you have three schools there. That Pacific is jam-packed up, going up and down. I, there is no parking in that neighborhood. I love that neighborhood. I call it the most overdeveloped neighborhood in North Glendale, but my bigger issue here is, okay, you approve, you know, seven additional from what the state mandate requires today, and then next, you know, next week, somebody else comes, and you add another seven on top of what the density bonus allows for, so on and so forth, and then you're ending up with...
Yeah, that definitely goes to neighborhood compatibility. So you can certainly speak about the parking in relation to the discretionary density bonus and how that affects neighborhood compatibility. And that is one of the factors contained in the municipal code as to, does the council want to approve this additional discretionary density bonus of seven additional units?
So, we can?
You can consider, but I think what we're saying is, if you don't, if you think the density is too much for that neighborhood, given that it's more dense than what even the state density bonus laws, then don't approve it. And then the applicant will have the obligation to go back and figure out what they can make work there, rather than trying to say, let's approve the 43 units, but put additional conditions related to the waivers and concessions.
How many units are there now?
There's eight.
So it's going from eight units to 43?
Correct.
Yeah.
Couple of questions. First of all, let me ask you on the parking. So if we were to not grant the discretionary, what do we call it?
Bonus.
Density bonus. Okay, so they would be going, they would have to build, instead of 43, it would be 30...
Six.
Six, 36. Now, they wouldn't, they could reduce then the number of, the amount of parking, right? That's up to them. They could go to zero if they wanted. Is that correct?
Correct, because they're located within a half-mile of the major transit, which would be the BRT, the future BRT.
So, they could, yes. So whatever they're entitled to under density bonus law, yes, they can do that.
Okay, so, by not allowing that additional density, we're not, I mean, we're not necessarily getting a better ratio of units to parking because they could reduce the amount of parking they're providing?
Correct. I think they have provided more parking than they're required to under the law, so...
They're required 22, and they're providing 29.
Right. They're required 22, and they're providing 29, in case...
But they're not actually required 22 at this point. They're not required to have any...
I'll let Milka address that.
Correct, because they're within half-mile of what's considered a high-quality transit because it would be that BRT, future no-ho to Pasadena route. So they essentially wouldn't need to provide any parking.
Right.
But in this case, they are.
Okay. So, now I have a question for the representative of the developer, and I apologize, I forget your name.
No worries. Before you ask your question, I want to clarify. We are the architectural design team, and there is no quote-unquote evil developer behind this project. The owner is sitting right there. She and her mother own the property since 40, 50 years ago, so, and they intend to keep it, so.
Yeah. I didn't mean anything pejorative by the word developer. I mean, their owner, developer, whatever we want to call it. I'm just, I'm interested in, just from a marketability point of view. So you're going to have 43 units if this is approved. You're going to have 29 parking spaces. How are you going to allocate those parking spaces, and do you see that as, as a problem when it comes time to marketing these out? Because you're going to have quite a number of prospective renters that you're going to be informing, you know, hey, you don't, you don't get parking here. What are you, what are they thinking about that?
I have to say that at this point, we haven't conducted, like, an official study on the market and the market demands, but I can speak from a design standpoint. LA overall, the metro, LA metro area is, the new generation, there are, there are, you can find youngsters who are living in LA without a car. So we cannot predict as to how the market rate, market demand will react in three years from now when the project is approved and out of the building department, ready to be built. As for dedication of the parkings, I would like you to consider that, as part of the affordable units that we are setting aside, you have to consider that it might be possible that the car demands might be lower when it comes to, like, older tenants. And, again, we are also providing, like, bicycle, bicycle parkings, like bicycle spaces and lockers, which by code and by right, we are allowed to use that just to make it easier for the tenants.
Right. And I'm not questioning whether that's the right number or the wrong number. I'm just curious, because I think the intent of the state law is to leave it to the developer, the owner, whatever we want to call them, to determine what the market will bear, right, and what kind of parking they need to provide. So, it's, you know, it's, it's something I'm, you know, I'm interested in how that plays out in their minds. Okay, I think I, I think I have one other, wait, hold on. Could you just give me a second? I had one other thing I wanted to ask. So, oh, this is not for you. Now, now for...
Thank you so much.
For our staff. I'm curious on, from, in our housing element, what, what numbers did we put towards this site? Do you know that offhand? Or I should say, what numbers did we assume were developable at this site?
I believe, and it's in the staff report, so I would like to verify, but I believe it was eight above moderate.
Correct. Said each designated for a total of four above moderate income resulting in a combined total of eight above moderate income. So you're correct.
Total units?
Eight.
But there are eight there now. How many are there now?
Eight.
So we didn't assume any additional density that, potential at that site?
No, we did not. Not on our available sites inventory in our housing element. We did not.
Oh, okay, that's interesting. Surprising a little bit. Okay. So, and then, the last thing, you know, I don't know about everybody else, but I know, in generally, you know, it's, it's hard when we lose these older courtyard apartments that we know and love and are part of the Glendale fabric. I think, but the point is, in this, in this case, to one of the speakers who said, you know, we don't want, we don't want, we don't want to lose what's there now, that's not a choice before us. I mean, this is privately owned, by right. They can tear down what's there, and they can build something up to 36 units without us granting any discretionary bonus, right? So, the idea that we can somehow preserve what's there, I wish there were more mechanisms to do that, but, but in this, but there aren't. And so that's not the decision before us. I think the decision before us is, you know, is it, do we think that that area can handle, you know, an additional seven units? This discretionary element is seven units that we would be adding, and of those seven, three would be very low-income units, right? So we're getting a plus seven. Out of that, we're getting three of those seven being very low-income, and we just have to weigh that, I guess, the benefit of having that additional housing in our city, which we need, against, you know, this question of its impact on that particular area. So, that's how I'm thinking of it. Is that pretty much correct?
Yes, that's correct. They, if they just went with the 36 units that they were allowed, they would only have to provide three very low and three moderate. So you're correct that we're getting an additional three very low in exchange for, if you want to think of it as an exchange, in exchange for the additional seven units.
Right.
And I just wanted to answer Councilmember Sockian's question. With respect to the rents, wasn't able to find the exact rents for the density bonus, but it's very close. It's the former redevelopment, 20% set-aside rents, and this, it's going, I'm have, going to have to give you a range of between, so for a studio, for moderate, it would be somewhere between, the rent would be somewhere between 1,031 and the very, very low end to 1,890 on the high end. And then for one-bedroom, it would be 1,178 on the low end and 2,025 on the higher end.
That's for moderate?
Yes, correct.
And for very low or affordable?
For very low, it would, the range would be 859 to 1031 for a studio, and 982 to approximately 1178 for a one-bedroom.
Well, for 500, for 500 square feet, potentially, 500, you know, that's a very small apartment. That's below our standards of 600.
But that's still low in this market?
Yeah, I guess compared to...
I mean, yeah, but you also have to take into consideration what people's income is, and people who are on social security, people who are on supplemental security income, SSI, they're making 1,100. They're receiving $1,100 a month. Doesn't leave much for anything else, really. I brought that up, and I asked that. I knew that what we consider, or what we throw out there as, in terms of very low or moderate or affordable, I don't know if the public really understands it. I don't know if we always understand it, but I want real dollar figures associated with it, because, you know, when you say, on the high end, it's 1,890, or it's north of 2,000, that's already getting into the range of what some people in Glendale pay for their mortgage if they bought their homes when they were lucky and fortunate, they were fortunate enough to get into the market. For someone coming into the market right now, especially young people and people who want to start families, or older residents who are on fixed incomes, it's almost silly for us to call these rates affordable.
Okay, well, this is what we have before us. We can't touch the 36. We're stuck. I think the real question is, do we want to go and give the additional seven units to make it 43? Personally?
Are you going to close the hearing first, maybe?
Yes. If there's no other questions, then I'll close the hearing. So, personally, I, I have a hard time going to 43. I have a hard time going to 36, but I have no ability to touch that. But to go from 36 to 43 is just putting salt on the wound. The wound of losing local control and local discretion on the type of housing project. This is a very dense project. The units are, many of them are extremely small, 500 square feet. I had a dorm room bigger than 500 square feet. And the parking, although that isn't a strict criteria, is going to be tough, and I think we owe the residents of Glendale a better quality than 500-square-feet units, and the neighborhood conditions, I don't think, support a additional seven units on top of an extremely dense, built-out, no-green-space, extra-high project. So that's where I'm at.
I would, I would agree about the density size of this. I want, first of all, say that, in terms of the architectural team, Mr. Belladian, who's been a DRB member, does impressive work. Your designs are nice. They're excellent. They're, but in terms of this area of town, what we're looking to do, what you're seeking to do here, I'm asking the property owner to really consider the impact you're going to be making on, on the city. You know that area. If you've owned that property for that long, I don't know if what you're asking of the council is reasonable for us to allow when we're hearing the impacts that's going to happen. All of us have been to events. I, you know, used to go to the Kaiser facility when I had Kaiser. We all know how that neighborhood is impacted. It's terrible that we, you know, even to put 36 units there. But if that's by right, I would just say that less is better, and whatever you can do to work with that, I urge you to, for the sake of our city. And I believe, Mr. Belladian, did you, were you raising your hand to, for a comment, or?
Well, no, we closed the...
Councilmember Sotterian.
So, I'm not okay with the additional units or decreasing the minimum unit size for this project. And I would love to see additional open space and whatever you bring back. I will note that I'm on Columbus's stalker, and we have a sad joke in the neighborhood that we use the front lawns of the buildings as our dog parks where we gather because there isn't any green space around, and there's definitely no dog parks in the neighborhood. That is a very dense area. I am concerned about the additional traffic that it's going to add to Pacific. And while I can say, okay, well, from 36 to 43, it's not much, but if the density bonus is in place and it's going to play out this way moving forward, I think we need to be more cognizant of how many additional units we're approving on top of the density bonus, because we have the... on top of the density bonus, um, because we have this in front of us today and I don't know what we're going to have in a couple of months that's next door and the door after that. So, that's where I'm at.
I guess I'll, I'm in the minority here. I, I would approve this, although I don't think the votes are there for it. Um, I think getting three additional very, uh, is it very low or low, low income?
Very low.
Getting three additional very low-income units, um, and seven additional units in a, in a city that really needs the housing, I think, is, is, is worth it. Um, we also do have to recognize that that is a, an area, the BRT stop will be nearby and, um, under SB 79, if they wait, they could certainly go much bigger. So, I think, um, I think what we're looking at here is appropriate for the area, uh, considering the, uh, the, the transit situation, our housing need. Uh, 500 square feet, I don't have a problem with. I rented out a little junior ADU that I have, that's 330 square foot. And I'll tell you, for a young person who needs a place to live, um, it works. I mean, it's better than being on the street. So, I think, um, 500 square feet is, is perfectly okay, I think. Maybe not for certain people, but for others, it, it would work just fine. So I, I would have no problem approving the discretionary bonus.
Well, if I can just add one comment-
Yes.
-because it's the sitting, I mean, Ms. Brooks? Are you not renting?
We are renting.
Okay, so do you think that you're transient?
Wait, wait, wait. Here, we can't, we're going to get in trouble. We can't take this.
Okay, I'll do it after, first of all. All right.
Okay, so before us, uh, we have two motions. One is to either approve the density bonus discretionary bonus and inclusionary housing plan or motion to deny the density bonus discretionary bonus and inclusionary housing plan. Well, that's not what we want to do. I mean, we want to, we can't touch the density bonus, that's clear. The only thing that we're talking about here is the discretionary bonus. So is there a motion to deny the discretionary bonus? Is that clear? Is it, is it clear stated?
You can make that motion, yeah, and we'll, we'll modify, we'll modify the motion that's before you. So if you want to just deny the discretionary bonus, you can do that.
I'll move.
There a second?
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Estaterian?
Yes.
Brotman?
No.
Harpetian?
Sotkin?
Yes.
Mayor Nagerian?
Yes. Okay, good luck with that. Um, and don't everyone assume that if Prop 79 is passed, that the project of transit is going to automatically trigger that extra development? That's all I want to say at this point. Uh, next item.
Next is the second period of oral communications. Discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no, no debate or decision. The city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report. We have, uh, four speaker cards. Our first speaker is Beth Brooks. Following Beth Brooks is Damian Sullivan and Jordan Henry.
Top student, Beth Brooks.
Okay, yeah. Elephant in the room at the meeting, you know. Mr. Brotman spilled the beans, that the parking lots were for revenue. So that's the, the one sentence, you can watch the video, that's the one sentence. He threw Mr. Calvert under the bus, he spilled the beans. I have a lot of metaphors there, too many mixed metaphors, but there you go. Anyway, my most important thing, two things. One, uh, the fact that you have three meetings a month, it's in the, it's, it was sent to Mr. Garcia. Uh, I believe you violated the municipal ordinance 2.04.010, which says you have to meet four times a month. You cannot have a consent item that actually overrides a municipal ordinance, as far as I know. So that's been since, you know, April 30th, 2019. You've been doing that and you're supposed to have 48 meetings, uh, a year. If you can't even meet on a Tuesday and it's a holiday, you have to actually set aside a different, a different day. So that is clear to me that that's a municipal ordinance violation. So I think you really need to look at that and as, again, I send it to the city manager and Mr. Garcia has it. But as far as local control over this developer salivating in terms of, you know, making every, you know, Soviet block houses, uh, in Glendale, I think you do have some tools. One tool, I think, I know you don't like it, but is a rental registry. And Pasadena has a rental registry of $238 per unit. If you actually put in a 250 or 240-dollar rental registry per unit, you are going to have developers saying, like the Sears building, that would be $166,000, uh, to pay just every year for a rental registry. You're going to get those developments go down. You're going to get the number of units to go down because developers are not going to like that. And I think you have to do that. I think you have to agendize this stuff. I think you have to do it right away. Uh, so that's number one. Number two, I think you have to have a resolution or requirement for union labor after four units. If you build anything higher than four units, you require union labor, not just prevailing rate, union labor. And I think you're also going to get pushback from developers who get smaller units. Because I think if we have to suck it up and, you know, these buildings are going to be built, at least let's try to, you know, get it to the point that people are not overwhelmed and there's hundreds of more. I mean, for Sears, you're talking 682 units, maybe 1,200 more cars. 800 of them are all going on Central to the freeway. So I don't even know how that even pa- I don't even know how that, you know, the fire department actually allowed that to happen. That seems to me to be insanity, per the number of cars. Uh, and also I think you're having lane reductions also, I think. I, I don't, I don't remember 100%. So the union labor, I think, as, as Alan Durham said, you have to have objective design standards. You can actually fight back if you have non-subjective, meaning objective, design standards because the Glendale Garden Homes, actually the residents on either side are staring at six-foot-tall, uh, walls because the developer put a courtyard in the middle and smack up against the single-family homes. It's going to be six stories. And because there are no objective design standards, to have sort of a gradient, eh, he's going to do it. Because that guy is, is a piece of work. Brody is a real piece of work. Uh, so, I would also say the ordinance you had about the high fire zones, you actually missed the deadline. So it was supposed to be, uh, signed by the 23rd of July. You signed it on the 29th. And that's because you missed a meeting. Going back again to, I mean, I watched the meeting, I understand, you want to have staff, have more, more work, you know, have, not work as hard to get this information to you guys and that's also because you guys need staff. I mean, you totally need dedicated staff. It's not even a question anymore. You need dedicated staff and then you'll be able to have more familiarity with the things that are being put in front of you that typically come very late and are very, very large. You know what I mean? I looked at the housing stuff and it was like, that could have been said in a page. I'm, I swear to God, could have been said in a page. Here's the program, here's this, you know, cost this, he helps this number of people, blah, 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 blah. Finished. That would have taken an afternoon, okay? Instead of dragging it out for, you know, 50 pages or 20 pages. So that's it, that's what I would say. I would say, and also fire, you know, you can push back according to health and safety. And I think you, that's why the fire ordinance is important and you better get it in, you know, in place, that you could push back as far as, you know, being a fire hazard. The Glendale Garden Homes, that is a fire hazard. That's a one-way going, one-way down and you're going to add, you know, uh, maybe 300 cars? I don't see how the fire department, you know, uh, signed off on that. And I would actually like to see the paperwork because that meeting was very bizarre. The design review board, you want to see a video, some interesting stuff? See that one.
Ms. Brooks?
Yes?
Um, you've said a few things that I've actually thought of and myself and have considered and I appreciate you coming here with some suggestions for solutions. On the rental registry, however, how would you see that? Do you see that being that number you threw out? And I don't know how much thought you'd put into it, but do you see that being applied across the city to every property?
I'll tell you the truth. Uh, I don't think it should be for, for less than four units, absolutely not. I mean, maybe even-
Four units?
Yeah, four, yeah, I think, I think, I think-
So the concern I have with it, the only reason I, I don't want to get into back and forth again.
Right.
We can continue the conversation.
Right.
But my concern is anything of that sort gets passed on to the renter.
You would have to have a resolution that it can't. I'm sorry, but you would actually have to, you'd have to have some way. You'd get 14 million, if you have 55,000 units, you, that's $14 million. Okay? Thank you.
Next speaker is Damian Sullivan. Following Damian is Jordan Henry and Jim Deener.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for letting me, uh, come in. Sorry for my attire, I wasn't planning to come and I decided to swing by. Um, this has been a very interesting week in Glendale. Um, I think it's been kind of a sad week in Glendale for a lot of the people that were, um, have been neighbors and friends of mine. I'd like to start my comments tonight by acknowledging, um, my soon-to-be-lost neighbors who lived here for years at the Glendale Garden Homes, who've been given their eviction notices, who won't be my neighbors anymore. Um, and that would be Carol and Angel and Ed and Jen and Jason and Katie and Paul and, um, all of the residents that have been there for the last several years. Some of you have visited. Um, I've had the great fortune to sit down under the umbrellas at Baskin Robbins with them and to, uh, just, uh, sit on the porch and, and, and watch the people walk their dogs at night. Um, look at the, uh, the birds up in those trees, everybody that walks the dogs. The dogs try to chase the squirrels. Um, they run around in all of the, um, gardens and what's, what's left of the gardens now. Um, and it's been sad, it's been very disheartening, um, to watch a very noble effort, um, be, at the end of the day, manipulated and used in a way that the people that, um, were great, um, faithful, um, renters. And let me just answer a question. This idea of, uh, whether somebody's transient or not, I don't, I don't, I don't view anybody as transient or not transient or valuable based on whether they rent or whether they own. Um, to me, people are people. And I, I think that, uh, these labels are superfluous and unnecessary in the world we live in. Um, we have, uh, a very changing landscape right now. Um, I think we are, uh, already with AB 130 and probably soon SB 79, if we weren't already, um, with the density bonus law. We are living in a, a city that is very ripe for predatory developers who manipulate the process and they come here and they take all of your power away. I really urge you to watch the design review board meetings of the last, the two of them because, um, you will see Art Simonian and Christopher Welch and everybody at the, the board literally saying in very, in great frustration, this is like the new wave of the future. They feel superfluous, they feel like they have no say. Um, they vented extreme frustration at the last two meetings, saying that they feel that they, they're, they're, they almost have no purpose because whatever they say in those meetings doesn't really matter because they don't have anything to do except say, have at it, build it, make your profit, enjoy it. And, and, and we're seeing, um, projects that are taking the maximum, giving the minimum amount of anything back that is anything good for the residents. And I think you're going to see a lot more of it in the future. Um, regarding the Glendale Garden Homes, the, uh, the advocacy representative for the LA Conservancy, Andrew Solomon, came and said, "We rarely come to Glendale, we rarely speak on these things," but this is, he called it a troubling project and he urged the design review board and I think you, by extension, to create a new wave for the future. Like, you're going to have to reskin how we look at these projects so that we don't just have developers walk in and say, "This is what we're taking, you've got nothing to say about it and get out of our way." Um, he urged the design review board and I think by extension you to understand that there are levers that you're going to have to, um, become even more adept at understanding and recognizing whether they are objective standards that you can, um, just like tonight with these units, you, that, you don't have to give everything and now that people are going to come and take everything and tell you, "We just can and nothing you can do," we, I think, are going to have to pivot and become much more resilient about realizing the things that we can do. And if we want to defend our neighborhoods, um, I just want to close by saying that it was an honor to have, um, these neighbors that are going to be gone and just, um, it, it's, it's a very sad thing to realize that you're going to take people. When you, we're not just tearing down buildings, we're throwing away, that, that was a neighborhood, that was a community. It was a little town unto itself. That was what's special about Garden Homes. They're like a little town unto themselves. We are throwing those people that are our friends and our neighbors in the garbage to say, "Sorry, but we're going to trade up." Um, you go live some other, and, and they'll probably go live in some other city, somewhere else. Um, you can't throw people in the trash that have been faithful and loyal. Uh, it's just not about who we are as a city, so, um, let's figure this out. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Jordan Henry.
Mr. Sullivan? I just wanted to say thank you for your, your general comments. And I was trying to speak to that, um, earlier when I got cut off because I wasn't supposed to speak back then, but Ms. Brooks, you're a renter and you're one of the most dedicated community members. And so calling renters folks that are not as dedicated or, you know, transient, um, I think we can all do better than that. Thank you. I did. Go ahead.
I can go forth. Next speaker up.
Jordan Henry.
Hi. On January 15th of this year, I emailed every one of you. It was just a couple days after the Eaton fire that occurred, uh, where seven, over 7,000 structures were destroyed. $125 billion worth of damage was lost, five miles away from Glendale. None of you responded to my email. Not one. I resent it to you tonight. Um, so you can look at this. I'm requesting that you agendize prescribed burns in the approximate nine square miles of open areas in Glendale, including the Duke-Majin area and the Angeles Mountains, along with the Berdugo Mountains, um, also in the Chevy Chase Canyon area. Uh, the short-term costs that this would cost to the city would be dwarfed by the long-term protections that would be gained. Like I said, 7,000 structures, 125 billion at least, just in Eaton Canyon alone. What have you guys done to prepare yourselves for the inevitability of a fire in our own community? Have you agendized this topic at all? I live a half-mile from the Angeles Mountains. Me and the, my 50,000 neighbors up there were within, well within that burn zone where it could come and demolish our homes. Unless, of course, that's something you, you would want to see so we could meet our housing quotas, buy up all that land like Gavin Newsom so quickly jumped in to do. Is this the goal? Is this why you're negligent? I hope not. I, I, I would guess you wouldn't be. But why have you not responded to my email? It was nine months ago. You've probably forgot. Why have you not agendized prescribed burns or any sort of measure that would help mitigate this issue? The inevitability. And again, I'm fully convinced nothing's going to happen. It never does. I've lost total faith in local government, but I'm getting it on the record. So when the time comes that this does occur and perhaps maybe my own house burns, my own child dies, God forbid, perhaps that happens. It's on the record. But you guys are not listening. You have done nothing to address that issue, among many other issues. I don't like living in this community because of the way the local government neglects its responsibility to take care of the community. Uh, in that email, I sent you a link from KQED dated January 10th titled "LA Fires Renew Debate Over Prescribed Burns and Fire Preparedness in California." And there's a quote in that and it states, "Prescribed fire is one of the best tools California has to prevent fires from exploding out of control. Experts say much more needs to be done across California." Is this something that you guys would support? Agendizing? Just to put it on the agenda? Discuss prescribed burns? What that would entail? The permitting required? The permitting required from the California Air Resources Board? It's very difficult. What if Altadena would have done that? What if the Palisades would have done that? Would there have been that much loss of life and property? What is your plan? Is there a plan? Have you thought about this at all? Will you respond to my email? I resent it. Will you agendize this? Do you care? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor. Can I, I want to read a brief email from Chief Fish. He wrote this to me back, when was it? Anyway, it was back when we got the original email. He said, "Prescribed burns are indeed a great way to reduce fuels in large forests and other massive open spaces. However, in a city like Glendale with wildland urban inter, mixed interface, the practice is simply not safe. First, the burns create unhelpful air quality for our communities. Second, burning chameys, chapperal, in our local mountains to clear the brush is very risky due to the volatile oils in the plants. Moreover, there's a tremendous amount of training and coordination that goes into prescribed burns and it's very unlikely any organization or agency would take that risk on, in Glendale. Third, Glendale has a very aggressive vegetation management program that ensures effective clearances between native plants and structures. Additionally, our vegetation management keeps the ground cover intact should heavy rains come. With burns, the ground cover is lost, allowing for mud and debris flows to occur." So, I just wanted to make sure this is understood by the public. I did reach out to the chief at that time. I got his answer was pretty clear, and I concluded from that there's no need to follow up with any agendizing.
Yeah, I got the same email. And what he said is...
Yeah. So, that's, that's why I, I didn't follow up and I didn't feel the need to agendize this.
And this was from our fire chief?
This is from our fire chief. This is Chief Fish.
Not a concerned citizen.
No, no. This is from our fire chief.
They know fire safety.
Who's recommending against this and in no uncertain terms.
And I'm trying to look through our minutes and find, but we have had discussions about the risks that, the conditions here, along with the hotter summers, the wetter winters that have resulted in increased vegetation and the drying out of it, what threats those pose, how we can address it, what are things we need to do to upgrade and modernize our fire equipment and services to be able to address those issues. So, we are working on it. Mr. Henry, I cannot recall the January email. I'll look at the one that you sent tonight and try to respond to it. You asked for a specific item to be agendized. Again, I'll give it a good faith read and I'll, I'm happy to reach out to you. I've reached out to you before. I haven't necessarily heard back of a time when you want to have these discussions, but I'm glad you continue to come to council and make your voice heard. That's after all what the democratic process is about.
And anyone who's concerned about their home and fire safety can certainly call the Glendale Fire Department. They will happily do a brush inspection for you and determine what areas and how far away from your structure the brush needs to be cleared. Next speaker, please.
Next is Jim Deener.
It's actually Fire Prevention Week.
My, my concern is parking. The unit in which we were previously discussing, I know I'm out of sequence, but it was two years ago, August, they were approved for a 17-unit with 42 spaces. And now, it kind of threw the other way around. I, I didn't fill it in correctly to speak up, but if another petition needs to be done, otherwise, one parking space and less, I'm sorry, one parking space per unit is a minimum because anything less is going to impact the area even more. It's been that way over 20 years when I did the survey. I mean, petition. If I need to, I'll do another one. Thank you.
We have two callers. One is Alex Y. You're on air. You have five minutes. Alex Y. Okay, we'll hold this call. We'll go to Alex Belekian. Alex Belekian, you're on air. You have five minutes. Go ahead.
Hello? Hi. I'm Alex Belekian. I wanted to talk about DGWP rates. I was hoping that you all could get your Exhibit 1 that was given with the file. I would like you to have it in front of you and also get out your smartphones that we could calculate. But what I wanted to impress upon people, there were numbers being thrown around like 40%, 45%. People have noticed a very real increase that is greater than 45%. And I am simply taking the information that has been given to you all and calculating it. So, do we have a quorum of people having Exhibit 1?
Dr. Belekian, I hate to interrupt you, but this was an agendized item and as such, your comments...
I understand, but what, what happened was, right, but what happened was, I called when Mr. Mellon was presenting and they said, oh, you have to, I called after Mr. Mellon finished presenting. They said, "Oh, when there's a presentation, you cannot call." Like, I thought it was with the speakers. So, I understand, but I want to talk about this because this is a very real issue. I just want you to take out your calculators and, and, you know, look at the numbers. Look at that first thing, point 1661. The first column is...
Thank you. Unfortunately, I'm getting the sign from our city attorney that such a discussion is not appropriate and against our rules of order. So, you are invited to come back and speak next week on this.
Or, or...
Again...
Call, see Melas.
Yeah. Thank you, thank you, however.
We have Alex Y. Alex Y, you have five minutes.
Thank you. Good evening. Appreciate the opportunity to speak. Don't rarely speak this long at the end. We're talking about a couple of issues. One, housing. Two, transportation. Let's start with housing. I think tonight was really an interesting, very informative, hopefully for everybody, little case study on what happens in local government that prevents housing and that really screws the younger generation over. This is truly a generational problem. This is middle to older age people using the levers of local government powers to handicap the economic growth of their city, to cut off opportunities for young people, to prevent them from having similar, albeit a little bit different opportunities than they themselves had because this metropolitan area has changed in nature. You can't, you can't just get a job and you can't get a single family home anymore. There's not the land. If, if you notice, three out of the four council people on the diet were voted against granting the E43 unit for that apartment building. What they're doing is basically saying, "We want less supply and we want to drive prices up and we're not serious about increasing the supply of housing, thus bringing the price of it down or stabilizing it for people who want to rent in the city." So, you are making housing more expensive. It's very unfortunate that that has occurred. As people had mentioned, not everybody needs to drive or have a car. And, you know, I really think the developer, even if they built that unit, 43 units, 50 units, even no parking, I'm sure it would be rented out, you know, in a short amount of time. There's that much demand for housing. Mayor Najarian, you know, when you said 500 square feet, my dorm room was about that size.
Okay, so, Alex Y, I have to interrupt you. For the same reasons we had to cut off Alex Belekian because he was discussing an agendized item which council had already considered, we cannot entertain your discussion of the project at 441 West Glen Oaks Boulevard and the density factors and parking, whatever was associated with that presentation.
Okay. I'm making a greater point about...
You have something else to say? You can move on.
About housing policy.
Well, you're making specific reference to that project and that has, has, or closed you from...
Understood. Thank you, Mayor. As an example, okay, I will generalize and I will go to my transportation point. Thank you.
Okay.
In terms of 500 square feet, dorm room, interestingly, you know, UCLA, one of the major universities in the area, just in case people didn't know, you can't even get a single dorm room anymore. You can't even get a double. They've switched pretty much all the traditional dorm rooms to triple in like smaller than 500 square feet because there's that much demand. So, I, I just, it's a different world than the older generation grew up and lived in. I think there's a lot, and surprising too, because council member Kentucky and, and council member Satrian, you know, you're not that old, but I guess you're middle-aged enough to just be out of touch. I mean, I, it's, I would expect you two to be a bit more, you know, open to more housing. But let me talk about transportation. So, somebody called earlier. They talked about the DRC and they were fear mongering and whatnot. You know, that project, I hope the council stays strong behind it as those bus lanes come in. It's not a detriment to the city of Glendale that we're actually playing nice with the project in terms of letting the lanes be dedicated bus lanes for as much of the city as possible. That's the whole point. The whole point is to keep the buses out of conflict travel with personal vehicles. The point is to have those lanes which also double as emergency corridor lanes, which is good for emergency response time and safety in the city. You know, it's not our problem that Pasadena, you know, hammered out some deal back in the day, that Green Street, you know, they can't have dedicated bus lanes because they're rotable or something silly like that, you know. They're going to be mixed flow. And it's not our problem that Burbank also, you know, can't get their stuff together and, and, you know, they keep freaking out about bus lanes out there. It's a good project. It'll help people get around. Again, helping the younger generation, ultimately the point here is to help the economic vitality of the city and to help the younger generation. It's a changing city. It's, it's not going to be the same. You're going to have more people who live in smaller square footages that are still perfectly livable. I mean, it's still bigger than like people living Tokyo and other big cities in Asia. It's still bigger square footage, bigger units, bigger kitchens, bigger appliances, more open space than other places. You're going to have more people that don't drive. You have more people that have only one car for a household or no car while they're younger or even when they're older. And you need to facilitate that there's going to be higher quality transit options besides just owning a car expense. If that's a burden on young people, even people can afford it. Would you, you know, if you can dodge that expense, that's great. You can walk if you're able-bodied, you can bike, you can pick a bus. You know, if you want a car, so you can go on road trips and whatever, get one. But it's a nightmare driving in the city anyway. So, it's just interesting tonight. It's almost like a mask-off moment. I hope young people really understand that there's an old way of thinking here at play and it preserves certain interests of people who have things or established. And I don't think they quite understand the solution to the problem of the modern age.
Thank you. You're out of time. Thank you very much.
That's it?
That is all. Yes.
Move to adjourn.
Should we talk about anything else? I have this motion regarding the ADU.
Yeah, and I apologize. It'll take a little bit of mind. But I briefly just want to address two points during all communications, one related to our meeting. So, even though the code, the code does say council shall meet every week, but also the resolution that was recently adopted by council and has been our practice, which is the council sets a calendar annually by, by motion. And then, nothing, nothing in that, that motion is contradictory or prohibited by, by that code amendment. And that was further clarified by the resolution that the council adopted earlier this year. The other point was related to the, the fire hazard ordinance adopted by the council. It was adopted within 120 days of the MAPS coming out. It was signed by the mayor, believe, after the 120 days, but that doesn't affect the validity of the, it being adopted on time. And it was submitted within 30 days after that. So, that was another comment made. I just wanted to address that. So, we do have one item of new business.
Law clerk in your office, Mike? Someone to go through the details on? Okay, we'll discuss that later.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of council, as you're aware, you authorized us to resolve a pending dispute with the Department of Housing and Community Development. So, I'd like to read the motion and then ask that the council move it and adopt it. So, we're requesting that the city manager and city attorney are authorized to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the California Department of Housing and Community Development Department to resolve claims made in August 15, 2025, follow-up notice of violation issued by HCD wherein HCD alleged that the city is in violation of the state ADU law with respect to three provisions of the city's ordinance governing the construction of ADUs and junior accessory dwelling units contained in GMC Section 30340080 as follows. One, the city's prohibition of new construction ADUs above detached garages or carports. The city's requirement that a lot with one residential unit may have either an ADU or an accessory living quarter, but not both. And the city's limitation of construction for single-family use of either one converted ADU and JADU or one detached new construction ADU and a JADU. And for multifamily use of at least one and up to 25% of the existing multifamily dwelling units within portions of existing multifamily dwelling structures not used as livable space converted to ADUs, but not more than eight detached ADUs. The MOU requires the city to bring forth amendments to its ADU ordinance to address these three challenged provisions referenced above and not to enforce these provisions until either the new amended ADU ordinance takes effect or the new amended ADU ordinance fails to be adopted after a vote and requires HCD to forbear from enforcing this notice of violation through the initiation of litigation or any other enforcement action that may otherwise be permitted by state ADU law against the city as to the three challenged provisions. This motion and authorization to enter into the MOU constitutes the initiation of amendments to the zoning ordinance of the city of Glendale to effectuate the amendments contemplated herein, subject to review and recommendation by the Planning Commission and review and approval by the city council after notice public hearings. This MOU is not an admission of any violation of law, liability, or wrongdoing whatsoever by the city or by any person or department, and the city explicitly maintains that it is not in violation of the state ADU law. Rather, this agreement is made in order to avoid the costs and risk of litigation and/or any other enforcement action by the state of California or HCD. So, that's the motion I can provide in more context that the council desires.
Is someone ready to move it?
Sure. I'll, go ahead. Go ahead.
Second? I'll second it.
All right, I'll move it and we can file it under the "I fought the law" and the law one folder. And for clarification to the public, this is the state's housing department telling us that we are in violation. And if we don't make these remedies, then there'll be further consequences, so.
Roll call, please.
Council members, Asadrian?
Yes.
Bratman?
Yes.
Barbittian?
Kasakian?
Yes.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion seconded. We're adjourned.